Chairman, I think Tony's ready. Or is the commission ready?
Yep, I think we're ready.
Good. Good afternoon. And this is, there's a couple of times a year I call you honorable commissioners, and this is one of those days, we're getting ready to start budget. The calendar says May, so it is the time of year where you continue to do your most important work as elected officials representing the people of Sedgwick County through the budgeting of people's money towards services you deem important for the county. In fact, however, this budget development actually began last November as we assess the damage that COVID inflicted upon our community and this organization. We visited briefly about these challenges at our workshop in February of this year. Last year, the first words of the 2021 budget were, "Out of caution regarding the economic future of Sedgwick County, the 2021 budget recommends," and we listed four things, "No pay raise for employees, no external travel out of the city or county for training, approval of emergency or only highly necessary commodity, and deferring everything else into the future, and a continual partial hiring with the exception of key emergency personnel only." Now, after a year of withering work and challenges, it is time to face the new challenges that have resulted after experiencing the fallout of a 100-year pandemic in our community. Our main focus this year continues to be on employee compensation challenges, workforce staffing challenges, and stressed operations surrounding criminal justice, first responders, and a mental health system providing for our community. What we will undergo the next few days is just a part of the process, working toward an approved budget scheduled for late August. Our goal for the next several days is to hear from county-elected offices, the courts, as well as division and department heads regarding the challenges they face as they try to move forward during this time of hopeful community recovery. This afternoon, you will hear from the sheriff, the DA, and the courts regarding new challenges they face maintaining a competent and qualified workforce and operational challenges in dealing with backlogs that the pandemic has made worse. Later this week, you will hear from department leaders of comm care, corrections, emergency communications, EMS, the regional forensic science center, administrative services, all of who are having difficulty finding proper workforce to maintain proper operations. You will hear of rising costs of doing business amplified by the aftermath of supply shortages brought about by the pandemic and a worldwide scramble to recover as quickly as possible. And through it all, we will work through using a flat budget and a very limited fiscal resource to continue forward, providing the best service we can for this community. After this week of discussion, it is the budget team's challenge to bring back to you, the commission, a fiscally responsible recommended budget plan for 2022 and beyond. During this budgeting process, this recommended budget will be completed by June 25th and will come before you in public meetings starting in July. It is imperative that, as we work through these immediate needs, that we strategically also keep one eye on the forecast, which projects expenditures through 2026. So, thank you for your patience and diligence as we work through this process. Lindsay will now kick off the 2022 budget hearings by giving a brief history of where we have been. She will also reintroduce and re-update you on the financial forecast.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. So, just a couple of housekeeping things before we jump into the presentation. You should each have a copy of the slideshow that's pulled up here at your seats. This is probably the only one where we'll give it to you in cover and full pages, but we thought it was worth the extra paper and color so you could see all of the points we're going to try to make. You also have two documents, a document that looks like this, that we affectionately call the long sheet. This is the financial forecast that we'll get into in the second portion of this position. And then you'll see a document that looks like this. This is identical to what you received in February. We're not really going to get into the details of it. I just wanted for you to have it as a reference document as we move through this. So, as Tom said, we are right in the midst of 2022 budget development. And so, what we want to talk about today, first of all, is how did we get where we are today with our budget situation? Give you some background, state impacts, and then, of course, how our budget has responded, how this commission has chosen to address the issues and concerns that we've had really since the Great Recession that started back in 2008. Then we'll get into the updated financial forecast, which the Budget Office has been diligently working on. And I will be happy to ask Lorian to help me answer any specific questions you might have about those slides. And then finally, we'll talk about next steps. Commissioner Howell, speaking to your point earlier today about budget hearings, that's a specific thing that we'll want to talk about through the course of this discussion in the next week or so. How do we do that in response to Senate Bill 13 that passed this year? So, I'm going to move through these first few background slides relatively quickly just because, again, this is information that comes off of that sheet that we looked at in February. So, since 2008, again, when the Great Recession started, our assessed value or our tax base has increased 26%. At the same time, CPI, Consumer Price Index, or a measure of inflation, how much does it cost to buy goods and services over time, has increased 22%. Average home value has increased 30%. And probably the most optimistic positive statistic that we have seen or talked about so far this year is this line about personal income. This is based on income to residents in Sedgwick County, and that has increased in this timeframe 33%, so greater than any other metric that you see listed on this slide. Now, at the same time that all of this has happened, these are kind of things that happen outside of the county's decision-making process. The property tax levy, which the commission has set, has only increased 18%, so less than inflation. And the mill levy rate itself actually has decreased from 2008 to 2020 by about two mills. In that same period of time, again, 2008 to 2020, the county has operated 16 programs, either at the request of, behest of, or in contract with the state of Kansas. For those 16 programs, expenditures have actually remained relatively flat. They've only increased 1% over the life of that term. State aid, though, the amount of money coming in for those programs has decreased more than 20%. Medicaid revenue has decreased 46%. Now, we have had other program income, charges for service and things that have come in that have increased 10%, but clearly, that's not enough to offset that state increase. So, what the bottom line on that is, is that Sedgwick County support, local support for those programs that we operate on behalf of the state of Kansas has increased 18% at the same time that we're dealing with the impacts of the Great Recession, as well as what you'll see on this next slide, the impact of state action that we've seen. And so, again, we talked about this at the February workshops, so I'm not going to go into all the details on all of this. But the top two lines here that you see here, LABTR, which stands for Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction, and CCRSF, which is the City-County Revenue Sharing Fund, both of those have not been funded. Those were both intended originally to be set up so that communities would get funding from the state, and that would mean, then, that there wouldn't need to be as much property tax passed along to the community. Well, those have not been funded, and you can see the cumulative effects of each of those. Again, then, the state took action as an economic development tool to exempt commercial machinery and equipment. And so, what that means is that as entities start to replace their personal property, that new property isn't taxed. And so, over time, that amount of personal property diminishes. And so, over that amount of time, we estimate that we have lost about $44 million as a result of that. And then finally, in 2014, the legislature took action to begin phasing out what's called the mortgage registration fee. Of course, that used to be based on the value of a mortgage, about a quarter of a percent. That got phased out and was replaced with a per-page fee. And so, actually, thanks to really low interest rates in 2020, the impact of this has not been as much because we did have just a sheer number, sheer volume of mortgages replaced. But we think we've lost about $6 million since that was phased in. So, what have we done in response? So, yes, ma'am?
What is, okay, LABTR is what again?
Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction.
And then what is CCRsF?
City-County Revenue Sharing Fund. And I can, those were slides that we presented at the February workshop. I can send them to you with more detail on what that actually is, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we'll shift over then to what has the county's response been to kind of all of these pressures from the outside? And so, we're going to move pretty quickly through the first few years just because it was a long time ago, and I'm not sure it's worth spending a ton of time with you. But we'll start with 2008. You can see the slides here. The Great Recession began, that was when we had the 31.3 mills. In 2009, we dropped another mill because we did not do the jail expansion that had been planned for when that mill levy rate actually was increased in 2007. And at that time, the county had a strategic plan for its compensation, and so, there was a 4% pay pool in place at that time. In 2010, of course, like everything, the Midwest feels things later than the coasts. And so, the Great Recession didn't really start to hit us until, really, 2009, 2010. So, in 2010, for that budget, the performance pay pool that was a part of that strategic plan was suspended. Folks who got, who had salaries of $75,000 or left got a 2% pay adjustment. And then you can see that there was a half a mill reduction, again, just related to that jail expansion that did not occur. Strategic reductions of 3.3 million were made. So then, moving to 2011, we had another half a mill reduction, again, related to that jail fee expansion. There's a 2% performance-based pool. And then, in mid-year, we had some changes that were made, deferred capital projects, and did what we called the Special Voluntary Retirement Program, which unfortunately did not yield the cost savings that we expected over the life of the program, but was a noble effort at the time. So then, what you have seen in the prior forecast presentations that we've done for you, you've seen that, like, really scary slide where it looked like we were going to be insolvent by the end of the financial forecast period. And so, that's what started 2012 and 2013, where we did really concentrated budget cuts that frankly, we've never come back from. So, in 2012, we implemented across-the-board budget reductions. If it was a public safety department, it got a 3.3% cut. If it was not public safety, it got a 6.6% cut, which was pretty significant. And of course, there's no employee pay adjustment at the time we were making such significant cuts. So, 62 FTEs were eliminated within elected offices. We unfunded 28 positions, and three positions moved to grant funds. Then in 2013, that's really the first time we started using the term "flat budget." That is when we took last year's budget and started working off of that. So, for this round, we implemented a team called the Prioritization and Restructuring Steering Team, which made up of manager staff and elected officials. And that group went through and reviewed all of the programs and operations offered by the county that survived after that first round of across-the-board cuts. And they further reduced 7.2 million of recurring costs out of our operating budget. We also made changes to the health plan because costs were just accelerating beyond belief. And another 69 positions were eliminated out of tax funds. That was also when we reduced funding to our community partners. And unfortunately, we all had to share that burden. So then, in 2014, again, you'll see "flat budget." And going forward, I've said modify through decision package requests for 2014. That is really the case ever since then. So, to save slide space, this is the only time you'll see that particular language, but it's been true every year since. We shifted programs to alternative revenue sources where we could. The jail mental health pod was fully implemented. A very contentious discussion for the commission at the time was the closure of the Judge Reddell's Boys Ranch because it was a state program where sufficient funding just wasn't coming in to continue to operate it at the level that staff thought was necessary or the commission at that time. In 2015, again, as a cost-savings measure, we shifted to a self-funded health insurance plan. So, instead of paying somebody premiums every month, we just basically underwrite the costs ourselves. We have a little bit of insurance to protect against major costs, but that was a big savings for us. And this is where you start to see some additions, strategic additions. So, there are some strategic additions to public safety and public works. We tried to bring in EMS billing to save money, and then the mortgage registration fee began a phase-out. In 2016, this is when we had the reduced funding to external community development, culture, and rec agencies. And then, one of the things you're going to hear me come back and harp on a couple of times during our discussion now is the action that was taken in 2016 that jointly amended the county debt policy, but then also put in place our target mill levy rate resolution. And those two things were tied together at the time because the intention was to reduce the amount of debt that we carried. And then eventually, that debt would fall off, and we would be able to reduce our mill levy rate accordingly because of that saved money. We'll get into that here in a moment. But that's when that action was taken. This also is when the state legislature passed the legislation to adopt the property tax lid, even though you'll see it doesn't actually take effect until the 2018 budget. So, in 2017, we did have a performance-based pool. We tried to add some funding to address compression just based on kind of our erratic pay pools over the years. And we also included some additional budget authority to pay for overtime changes related to changes to the Fair Labor Standards Act. We started to add more positions, but you'll see a focus was really on public safety as a core priority for the county. It's also in the law enforcement training center, got some funding. And then that is actually the year where we spent $6 million on elections equipment, even though you can see in prior years, we had set aside some cash for that. So, in 2018, the 2018 budget is when we started living under the state property tax lid. We did have a 2.5% flat pay adjustment, and then we tried to just move the pay structure slightly. And then you can see there are a variety of other additions that were made. Now, in the course of the 2018 budget adoption in 2017, we did amend the debt policy and started doing more debt. But the problem is, we didn't do anything with the target mill levy rate resolution. And so, we allowed ourselves to have more debt, but didn't necessarily provide the funding mechanism for it. So then, in 2019, we had a 2.5% flat pay adjustment and then a 1.5% bonus pool. The distinction here, of course, is the bonus is one-time money. It doesn't go into your base rate, and so, that was not money that anybody carried forward with them. Again, some resources were added for public safety and then human services. Some community collaborators were added to try and start to address some of those issues with substance use and mental health. We started our radio replacements. We had a big concentration on space needs. And then that was the first year that we funded the zoo administrative building. So then, we get to 2020, and in the adopted budget, we had a 2.25% flat pay adjustment, a 1.25% pay structure adjustment. And then we, if you recall, had set aside 1.25% for targeted pay adjustments that were supposed to go to those positions that had highest turnover and were the hardest to fill. And unfortunately, again, as Tom said, due to economic uncertainty, that got deferred. Now, later in the year, we did do furloughs to save some money and also just because work wasn't being done. That was actually the primary reason with the response to COVID. We did do COVID stipends for essential staff who were not able to work from home, kind of right at the beginning of the pandemic, during shutdowns and such. We also used that 1.25% pool to do $300 year-end bonuses. Again, not a ton, but something to say, "Thanks for sticking with us." Of course, we received CARES and Spark money. And ultimately, just as a point of reference, the Family First Act made us do the donate, or the leave program, and we paid $920,000 on behalf of leave for employees related to COVID. So, coming into 2021, we didn't do a pay adjustment. We deferred technology review board purchases. We froze on essential spending. There were a few things that were added based on high-priority topics. The ICT One program was permanently added that had been a pilot for a while. Before that, the Diversity and Inclusion Officer, an epidemiologist in health, and then, of course, some public safety and public works staffing. So, as we're approaching 2022 and this budget development, departments were told to submit a flat budget request. We do have a compensation focus, but as you can see, after years and years and years of lean budgets, there are needs. And you're going to hear about those through decision packages that departments are going to present to you. So, we want to focus on compensation because that's our greatest need. But that doesn't mean that there aren't other things out there. You will see next Tuesday, a very robust capital improvement program, set of requests that we will talk through. And of course, as we talked about earlier, Senate Bill 13 does extend our budget calendar this year a little bit. It will extend it a lot more next year. But this year, it pushes out budget adoption to August 25th. But what it also does by virtue of Senate Bill 13 is every year, even if there's a slight increase in how much of the property tax levy there's going to be, we're going to have an obligation to communicate that to the public and seek their feedback through a public hearing. So, my question for the commission, and something that I think we'll need to resolve and hopefully get some answers to by the time we wrap up this budget hearing discussion by next Tuesday, is, do we really still have a need for a target mill levy rate resolution? If we have these additional transparency rules that are out there, and if we know we've changed our debt program, is the need still really there? And do we adopt a different resolution? That would almost require you to have an annual hearing regardless of what that commission chooses because that's by law, that's what we're setting the rate at? Or do you just get rid of it entirely and deal with it each year? So, I talked about things happening outside of our control. One of the things you won't hear about this year that you've heard about in prior years are the costs of doing business. We've pulled those out. There's actually a separate page of costs of doing business decision packages in your budget hearing binder. But they're in the forecast, and there are things we talked about. Things like IT maintenance costs. Since 2008, those costs have gone up 169% versus inflation of 22%. Pension costs, state-set pension costs, 91%. Health insurance, 74. Inmate food, 74. Inmate medical, 69. And utility costs, 25%. And that doesn't even include the amount we have paid in April for February after that lovely freeze that we experienced where our bill was $335,000 versus our normal $23,000 monthly bill. So, we have taken quite a few actions. This summarizes all of that information. And of course, property tax reliance, as a result of everything that we've gone through, is up significantly in 2020 versus what it was in 2008. This has not left our employees unimpacted. As you can see here, the average employee salary has increased 18%, but their capers contribution and their health contributions have both gone up in that time. So, really, in terms of their take-home pay, they have only increased 15%. And again, I'll bring back the point of inflation. That is 22%. That's just the same price of buying goods and services. So, we have not even kept up with inflation now. I'm not arguing that those were bad decisions that were made by the commission at the time because there were a ton of competing challenges after the recession. There was a lot of pressure to have a balanced budget. But the problem is, it's now caught up to us. And that's why you're hearing about more aggressive solutions to compensation than you've heard the last few years. So, switching over to the forecast discussion then, what you're going to see in your binder are budget requests. That's not a financial forecast. The forecast is a tool that tells us what do we think is really going to happen. The budget is a one-year spending limit. And again, not a challenge. We don't want everybody to spend every penny of their budget. We focus on the forecast, what we really think is going to happen. And so, that's what we're going to phase over to talk about now. So, when we talk about the financial forecast, it's really important to understand that the county has more than 40 funds, 40, to capture the distinct services, revenues, and and out for specific programs. We are only going to focus on eight of those funds. Those are the funds that have a unique mill levy rate that go with them. And so, you can see that of those eight, the general fund, of course, is the bulk. That is why we spend so much time talking about the county general fund because it's also the one that has the most flexibility. And so, more than 78% of our budget is tied to the general fund amongst these property tax funds. And within that, we have about 42 different departments or 42 different programs that you're going to hear about over the next week that are actually funded out of that general fund. So, your long sheet, which hopefully you all have your glasses, shows you basically revenue assumptions. Oh, come on, Chairman, you can do it. Not that late in the day. So, you've got your revenue assumptions at the top, your expenditure assumptions just below that. Then, in the middle, you'll see the operating income deficit. So, basically, what that section tells you in rows, 30, I should have brought my glasses, 35 through 43, is what is, what's the bottom line? How much, how much are we either bringing in over the amount of expense we have? So, if it's in black font, that means we're actually collecting more revenue than we're spending in a year. If it is red font, that means we have an operating deficit in that year, which means we're spending more than we have. Now, why does that matter? Because if you get down to the next section that shows ending fund balance, you'll see some yellow. That's actually a new color for us on this long sheet. What that means is that based on the policy we have today, we have to have at least 20% of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund at any given time. And we are expecting to bring down our fund balance, the amount of cash in the bank, to the point where we fall below the minimum by the end of this forecast if nothing changes. And that's not great. We want to have a cushion. In fact, generally, between 28% to 32% is where we get the highest accolades from our credit rating agencies. Then you'll see mill levy rates. This is where you'll see the impact of that target mill levy rate resolution. It's 29.359 until you get out to our 2023 column, and you'll see then it's 29.758. That's a .6 mill reduction, and we'll talk about what that actually means to the bottom line later in the presentation. And then at the bottom, you will see the cash-funded, only the cash-funded projects that are in the 2021 adopted CIP. And I really want to draw your attention to this because what I present to you next Tuesday is not going to be this. This is last year's adopted budget. We don't have any formal decisions from the commission enough to influence the forecast yet. So, this is, that's what's included in this forecast. So, what's included in the forecast, the numbers that you're seeing? All of our current services. 4% employee pay pools. The current adopted CIP and $2 million in 2026 because you didn't have a CIP that extended to 2026 last year. There are additional uses of cash. I think obviously, the biggest one for us in this year, and it's something that you've been aware of, is we're using general fund cash that we got out of CARES from last year. We're using that to fund COVID response this year. So, that's all of our temporary staffing, the vaccine clinics. That's the first-floor work that's continuing for a traffic court. That's all of that. There is also the final year of zoo admin building funding. I know Commissioner Dennis mentioned that ribbon-cutting that's happening later this month. We do have a 27th pay period next year. Almost every, every 11 years, we have a 27th one just based on timing. That alone is $5 million in the general fund. So, it is, that makes everything else that we talk about with compensation a little bit harder because all of that is exacerbated by that 27th posting. Then we finish out our radio replacements. And of course, there's quite a bit invested in the technology review board for replacement. New programs, something near and dear to my heart, obviously, is the replacement of the financial system. That's coming up, a necessary change since it's going in of support. So, that's a healthy chunk of this. Now, what's not included? Any of the details on the compensation proposals. We have been, I know our HR folks and Lorian have been working to try and figure out options and plans. We're actually going to have a discussion with WSU Tech later this week to understand maybe some concepts or ideas from, from what they're doing. So, we're still working on that, but we will have something for you by mid-June, which is when we have to have final decisions for the recommended budget. All of those things are still being lined out. We're also talking, already, our HR is talking with departments. We just had our meeting last Friday. So, there's still lots happening in the background, just not quite ready for public show yet. We don't have any funding for new programs in the forecast. We don't have funding for many of the decision packages that you're going to see. Like I said, this Like I said, this year, we've taken your cost of doing business decision packages out of the presentations that they're doing to you. It's just on a separate page. You're not going to hear about those. You're going to hear about more of the new things in their discussions. Any of the unbudgeted community and economic development requests, I know those are starting to pick up for commissioners, none of those are included in this forecast. Odyssey implementation is not included, and of course, any unanticipated technology needs are not included. So looking at our revenues, and you can see this on the sheet, so I'm not going to belabor this too much. Our assessed value, we do not expect to increase as much as we have in the past largely because of basically stunted aerospace growths. There's just not going to be enough of the residential growth to offset that, at least in what we're hearing from the appraiser's office. We'll get our real estimates in June and be able to give you a better figure. We expect things to start bouncing back a little bit with retail sales taxes, motor vehicle taxes, gaming revenues. We expect people to be driving more, so we expect to get more from the gas tax, and we expect our EMS folks to return to more normal operations, their more normal growth in transports, and so we expect more revenue there. Again, for employee pay adjustments, 4% is about 4.4 million in forecasted funds. We have the 27th pay period. We have an increase in the employer portion of health insurance. We're still working to get final numbers from our consultants on that, so that number may yet change. And then we have the technology review board next year. Again, just a reminder, we deferred all of those for 2021, so we're playing a little bit of catch-up in 2022. We have cash for the fourth year of the radio replacement plan and then cash for capital projects in the amount shown below. For 2023 to 2026, so the outer years, you can see those numbers. And again, I promised that we would talk about the impact of that mill levy rate reduction. That is estimated to be about $3.3 million less revenue annually related to that .6 mill reduction. And then you can see the other increases, which are pretty much normal for what we saw pre-COVID. On the expense side, you can see the pay pool is at 4% every year. Health increases are at 5% every year. You can see on your sheet what the CIP is projected to be. And then additional uses of cash, you can see how that is included for the radio replacement and the technology review board, how those are broken out per year. So what does that mean for the bottom line? We have our lovely slide here that has red and blue, nice KU colors. I'm shocked Lorian has let that stay in here with her K-State loyalties, but I'll take it as long as I can. So you'll see the red line is red, or I'm sorry, the revenue line. I know, brilliant, right? Very insightful. The revenue line is red. I know, I'm deep, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. The blue line are expenditures. And also blue, yes, you're right, sir. You've caught on quickly. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, thanks, everybody, so much. The problem you will see with this chart, unfortunately, is that the red line remains below the blue line for the life of the forecast. That's not our favorite thing. Now, this isn't a recommended budget, and this isn't a recommended forecast. This is just what we think as of today. This is going to get refined, hopefully a little better, between now and what we present to you in July as a part of your recommended budget process because this line really stinks. Seeing that many red numbers is not what we like, particularly when you look at 2026 and you've heard of that line on your sheet, and you see that that means that we're below our fund balance policy. That's not what we want. That's not the financial legacy that we've been left with and that we want to try and continue for our citizens. So there's some work ahead, but as you saw with all the other budget actions, commissioners, before you have done it, and we will do it again. So the general fund budgetary basis fund balance, this just illustrates in pie chart or in pie form what you see on lines 44 and 45 of your long sheet. Then when we take all of those funds together, that's what this slide shows with the slightly lighter blue fill. That's all eight of our county property tax-supported funds together. So in conclusion, this is not the recommended budget. The purpose is for you to collect information and to tell us what more information you need to make the decisions we need you to make. The budget information that you see does not include pay adjustments in the giant 1,000-page document you have, does not yet include pay adjustments because we don't know what those are, right? We don't know where those are going to happen, what reclasses are going to happen, or what the pay pool is going to be. Doesn't include changes for health insurance because we want to make sure we know what that real figure is before we include that in this budget document. Fleet charges and admin charges are in at the same level that they were for this year, and are no capital improvement projects yet because we need feedback from you next Tuesday on what you want to support going forward and what you want to change versus what was in the 2021 adopted. So you're going to see budget requests totaling more than $450 million. You're going to hear about decision packages totaling $3.3 million. You're going to hear, God bless these people, about some revenue packages, some opportunities for increased revenue of about $900,000. And then you're going to hear about one alternative reduction related to highways, but there'll be kind of a corresponding decision package that you'll hear about. So we probably need to find a different phrase someday, but the drop-dead day for decisions to be included in the recommended budget that we present to you is June 16th. On July 14th, you're going to hear the recommended budget. Now, the way Senate Bill 13 works is you all have to approve, you have to have a public hearing on your tax levy, basically the same time that you adopt your budget. So that's why the second hearing is slated for the day you adopt the budget. But to Commissioner Howell's point earlier, we know that that's not how we have done business in the past, and so one of the things we'd also like to get your feedback on, not necessarily today and not necessarily this week, but in the next week or two, maybe at a staff meeting, is how you want to have your public hearings. Do you want to have evening public hearings? Do you want to have additional public hearings over and above what you normally do because the timeframe is longer? So those are things you might just start thinking about, and we'll poll you at the appropriate time. And then August 25th is budget adoption. Now, next year, your budget adoption is going to be sometime in September. You're going to add a month to your process, so enjoy this short process while you can. And then, of course, as you need budget workshops or if there's additional information we can get, we already anticipate a few, but any of those things, we would love to know that from you as we go through these hearings the next week or so and go from there. Now, of course, this is a transparent process, so people are going to be able to watch these online. They can stream it. They can come back and watch later. We'll make sure the recommended budget is posted, and of course, they'll be able to give public feedback through the online portal or any other mechanism we set up. So lots of opportunities for continued discussion, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and I'm sorry I ran a little longer than I meant to.
Well, it's a lot to digest and a great intro. So Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. On your slide, on page four, it says Sedgwick County is operating 16 programs on behalf of the state. How many of those are required by statute and how many are we doing because we're just nice people?
I think, let me, I will follow up with you on that. I have that document sitting over there. So I will get that information to you, and if you'd like me to speak to it at the end of today, I can do that.
On Slide 22, you show the mill levy going down in 2023. If you look at the long sheet, it's, the red is very, it's a pretty sad story, actually. And that mill levy decrease impacts it even more. I would like to see a resolution drafted for us in the near future so that we can revise some of this long sheet to get rid of the cap, moving it down in 2023, then all the commissioners can weigh in at that time, but I think we need a resolution that we do weigh in because that impacts what we're looking at for the future. So I'm not saying one way or the other, but I don't know what the outcome's going to be, but we at least need a resolution so that we can start reviewing that.
It would be my pleasure. Thank you.
That's all my questions right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of things. I am on the long sheet this way. I'm wondering, can you remind me? I'm sure I probably know the answer, at least I've had the answer in the past, but I don't remember it right now, so I need some help here. What is the retirement rate of change, percent change? 9.9% in 2021, 9.3% in '22, and all it goes?
So we only get two years of actuals from KPNF at a time to know for those big fluctuations. And then we know that there's a statutory cap on the caper side of a percent increase. So for as much as we have specific information, we include that in the retirement rate growth. Otherwise, we basically use an average to predict the outer years, and that's going to be variable depending on, like, if you have a 27th payroll period, your retirement contributions are going to go up in that year because you're going to be paying more on that 27th payroll posting. So it's not necessarily telling you the rate, it's the percent change in how much we pay for each year, if that helps.
So this is only for KPNF then?
This is every, this is how much we pay in retirement generally. The caper side has a cap of increasing 1% per year. On the KPNF side, we only get two years of actuals, but remember, on the KPNF side, they actually use like an actuarial value. There's no cap on how much that can increase or decrease per year, and so we have to then go to averages in the outer years of what prior changes have been. We can't be as specific.
I guess I thought this was tied to the employee's salary. We were paying 8% of their salary. Of course, if they get a small raise and they continue to increase in salary, then we would pay the higher percentage, 8% of whatever they're making, and so I don't see how you get to a 9% increase in one year.
So it's based on how much total is, you're right. So there's two factors. There's the rate itself, and then there's how much we're actually paying in salaries. So as the amount of salaries increases, the amount of dollars you're going to pay increases. Also, the rate itself that we're paying increases, and so that's going to drive a lot of that fluctuation. And Lorian, if I'm saying anything wrong, or if you want to clarify, please feel free.
I guess my confusion is when I say 8%, that number has not changed. I guess, I don't know, what percent is the state changing?
So if, and I don't have my quarterly handy, but if you, there is actually a table that we produce in the quarterly report that shows how much the county's portion of retirement contribution is. That rate's actually closer to 10% for the caper side and closer to 22% to 23% for KPNF. It's how much we pay on every dollar of wage that we pay out.
All right. One other thing I would like to, and I don't know when, I'm sure we'll see it at some point in the next week, but let me just throw out there. I'd like to have a kind of some, a summary document of our debt situation, where are we all in debt and when that'll come up?
It's going to be in the presentation on Friday and Tuesday. I'm so glad you forecasted me that way.
I would love to see that. Let me just make a comment because in terms of the history of why the reduction of .601 mills was chosen, this ties into the bond and interest on the exploration place building, which pays off in '22, okay? And at that time, the equivalent, I guess it was, number one, the mill levy target of 29.359 was based on what we had in 2011.
Right, the 2011.
The 2011 mill levy, okay? So if we believe that government shouldn't just, if we believe that government should be essentially able to ebb and flow with assessed value, which is tied to the economy itself, that was the theory as to why we had a target mill levy. Now, I do see your point. If we have Senate Bill 13 that passed, there's a new target, and the target was established by the state, which says we don't want to exceed last year's revenue. And if we do exceed last year's revenue, there's essentially an action we have to take. My question is, if we didn't have that target, then, here's, I said this when I testified in TPC on Senate Bill 13. I think this becomes a baked-in cost. I think every single year, every single municipality over $100,000, has over $100,000 revenue, when it gets to the caveat, right? Every single jurisdiction or municipality that has over $100,000 revenue is going to go through this exercise every year of being transparent and informing the taxpayers of what we're doing with the budget. Where's our limitation on growth? Assuming that you go through that, where is the limitation on the growth other than the people's response that allows us to make those decisions?
I mean, I don't know that there is a cap per se, but I think that is set by the commission. And historically, before we had a rate, that was something that we got feedback from the commission at during their February retreat/budget workshop, and so that would be the opportunity for this commission to tell us what level of taxation they were willing to live with in this recommended budget to give us that direction.
I guess I don't, I might disagree with legislators on Senate Bill 13. I think by being transparent, when you break this down into dollars per parcel for a government unit, when people realize what we're talking about, they're less inflamed and passionate about, you know, taking time off and coming down and speaking to commissioners at a public hearing. I think when they understand what we're doing, especially for county government, I don't think it really gets them too excited that there's just not much, I guess I'm confident in what we do here, that I don't think there's as much passion about our government and our revenue collection as people might assume at the state level for some reason, but I'm not worried about that transparency. I'm not worried about the notification. I do think it's useful to have some type of goal to keep us from growing each and every year. In fact, last year, even though we had the target of 29.359, we still raised the mill levy through the technical adjustments of the county clerk by .1, by .015 mills. If we didn't have that target mill levy, then what would happen is we would just start with that number as we build our budget, but it's about a $75,000 increase.
I mean, we could, but I also think that's something the commission could say in February, don't reset it to this. I guess, to me, a resolution locks you in. It has the force of law. A more dynamic discussion, I think, is what we would propose as an alternative option for you to consider.
Well, I don't think that the commissioners are bound by the target of 29.359. That's our budget process. We target that, but there's nothing that says we have to stay at that number. That resolution does not bind this commission, does it?
My understanding is it does because it is a resolution and therefore is an official county action. And so we wouldn't need an exception, or we would need some kind of vote from the commission to deviate from that. Doesn't mean you can't change it.
It seems like the language the state uses, notwithstanding the resolution, okay? We have that target going into the process, but I think that we are empowered, I believe, by law to pass a budget. So this is an internal cap that we've created on ourselves, and again, notwithstanding the resolution that we passed that gives us a target, and I like to use the word target intentionally, it's a target. I don't know that it binds us to do that. I think that's a good legal question. We need our legal to interpret that.
I will pass it along to Papoon.
I mean, I think it's great to have a target, and I think the intent of that is that we don't grow government without restraint, accepting these technical adjustments as reasonable growth. We didn't actually vote for that. This .015 mills, we didn't vote for that, but it happened through technical adjustments by the clerk after we passed our budget. And if we simply follow the traditional processes of most municipalities, they use that technical adjustment as a small increase, they'll just capture that going forward. And so we, anyway, I think it's good to have a target, and I don't know how much that actually binds us. I think we have ways to deal with that if we need to, but I think it's good to have a target. And with respect to 29.359, again, that's based on our history, and the reduction was based on the fact we're paying off bond and interest, and we didn't want to basically act like we were suddenly flush with money because we paid off a building. That's all it is. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I forgot to ask one question earlier, so I'm going to come back. On your slide on page 20, you talk about gaming revenues, an increase of about $100,000. I guess I worried about that assumption with the new gambling facility opening north of Wichita. We get zero from that. We get no tax income from the property. We get no income from the gaming revenues. And because they're closer than the Kansas Star Casino, I'm worried that our revenues from the Kansas Stars Casino is going to decrease. So I don't know that we're ever going to see a $100,000 increase in it. I think probably, you put it in black, but it should have been in red.
We will keep a close eye on it and make that change accordingly. I will tell you, for now, we, and granted, the whole thing is not up and operational as large as it will be, but we haven't seen that impact yet on what we've received thus far from the Kansas Stars.
And let me just follow up with what Commissioner Howell mentioned. I think a resolution is basically a law that we have to comply with. That's why I think it, you can interpret it as a target that we can go beyond, but I think we're going to have to have a resolution to overturn a resolution if that's what the will of the board is.
That part would certainly be necessary. What that includes, I think, we'll have healthy debate about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. In regards to gaming revenue, since it was brought up, yes, technically, we aren't going to see anything from that 10- aren't going to see anything from that 10 acres that the casino sits on, but the 90 acres that they will be developing, we will see stuff from. And it will, there, there will be increased property taxes for that, sales tax. So we might not see on the 10 acres, but the 90 additional acres, we will see things increased there. So I wanted to address that. I have some, not necessarily, I have some questions that I don't know that will be answered now, but I want to pose them so that we can maybe get them answered throughout this process. So I see in 2009, the county deferred the jail expansion. Can someone help me understand the rationale why? I agree with it, but I wonder if we can find some notes as to why we didn't expand the jail. So that's for later. We don't have to answer that now. This prioritization steering team, is this, who's on this?
Well, it, I mean, it's been defunct for a lot of years. It was only operational that one year, but I can get you the list of who that was if you're interested.
So remind me again what they did.
So that was the team, so after we went through the, the course of across the board reductions, we knew we weren't all the way to the target. We took a two-year phased approach. So for that second year phased approach, that group basically met as a steering team to the county manager to figure out what do we cut now? Now that we are, are down, we've done across the board cuts, how can we strategically make reductions to get the rest of the way to the target? And so we went through, which I know everybody in this room is going to groan when I say the word, the inventory process, where basically we looked and said, tell us every program you do, how much you do it, rank it, prioritize it. And then we turned that information over. There were tons of issue papers and studies that were done to try and figure out what programs are discretionary, what is required by the state, what's not, and where can we either make reductions or just cut wholesale services to try and make reductions. And so that process went on, and that was the basis for those strategic reductions that were made in 2013.
Do we see any value? One thing that is pretty prevalent through this is flat budget, flat budget, flat budget, flat budget. And I wonder, and I mean, this is quite frankly overwhelming to, I mean, this is my third year and I've kind of getting it right. I feel like I'm getting my feet under me. But I'll be real honest, it's very, it's very overwhelming, and I think it's important to not just continual, continually do the same thing over and over and over, which is what, you know, sometimes it's easy to do. And so I wonder, what are those programs and how, what is the return of investment of the programs that we have? Are there programs that we could develop that would be better for taking care of our people and the programs in themselves? How are we, like for example, the mental health pod? That's kind of a program that we put in our jail as a different way to care for inmates. So, and this is a question for Sheriff Easter, which I'll ask later, but what's the recidivism rate of the mental health pod? Like that specific pod? So I want to know that. And then I think this is for Glenda later, but in 2016, we eliminated the day reporting, right? So what, what was the thought process around, just, we just had to cut something, so we cut that, and how did it impact the program? No, and I, I know there was more to it than that, a lot more to it. But, so those are kind of my questions around your initial presentation that I know need to be answered later, but.
Absolutely.
I'd like to keep that in the forefront when we're discussing departments.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, Lindsay. Just quickly, for my memory and kind of feel for Commissioner Lopez going through this for the first time, but.
Call whenever you need to.
I know. The, on the long sheet as opposed to the wide sheet, in the mill levy rates, line 54 to 61, so like WSU is, is a constant, and the rest of them kind of fluctuate. Can you tell me why, or remind me again why?
Absolutely. So we, with the rate of 29.359, basically each year, it is a matter of trying to figure out what specific needs are there. Maybe in one year EMS needs monitors and defibrillators, and so they have a higher one-time cost, or maybe highways has something that they need to do. And so in those years, we'll make sure that there's adequate revenue, but then it's also a matter of, what you'll notice is if you go up to the rows 44 through 53, and you look off to that goal fund balance off to the right there. Basically, at the end of the day, we're trying to meet that goal without catastrophically shopping a fund in a given year. And so it's simply, Lauren goes through this very fun exercise of juggling the funds to try and, and reach that ending fund balance each time, which is another part of why, if we can swing it, we would like to maybe consolidate some of these funds to have a little more flexibility and also a little less of this, because it is confusing.
Well, that's what, just eyeballing, we know that com care and EMS are important. I mean, everything's important, but it's on our radar.
Right.
And com care is 6.6, .634 actuals, but it, it ends up going down a little bit. And then EMS really kind of goes down a little bit, too.
Well, and a large part of that, too, is because, you know, as assessed value increases, the value of each of those mils means a little more. And if we are not adding in new programs in this forecast, if we're just continuing to do what we think, a tenth of a mil goes a little further than it did before. And so we don't need to dedicate quite as much of the mill levy rate to that program in order to maintain that specific fund balance. Does that make any sense?
Yes. Commissioner Lopez, you glad I asked that question? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I had, I forgot to ask this. So in, in regards to WSU, their budget of, this one is 9.2 million. Can we have a breakdown of what exactly that entails as far as scholarships, what it pays for? Where can we find that? Because that's not in here.
So that is not in that section yet, because the problem with WSU's budget is that it's, because it's 1.5 mils, we really have to wait until that June 15 estimate comes to us to then tell them, tell us what your budget is. So what we do in the actual adopted budget book is we produce that chart. And so in what I present to you on Friday as a part of the finance package, you'll see last year's chart for what that is, how they spend that money by category, by, you know, for graduate support, or for scholarship, or for debt. And so you'll see that in the presentation itself, and then it'll be produced as narrative pages in your budget book in July.
Okay. And so it will mention line 46?
Yes, it will have, it will have how their entire budget is broken out.
So can we see years past? I mean, can you send me like last year and the year before?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, I think I'm done.
Okay.
I don't see anything else, Lindsay.
Okay.
Well, real quickly, I just wanted to answer Commissioner Cruz. I think we've all got Dr. Muma on our, our calendar coming up in the very near future. And what they've done each year is that they've brought in their budget of how they're going to spend that 1.5 mil and presented to us when they have the one-on-ones with each and every one of us. So we will see that. WSU provides it to us.
Great.
All right. Thanks, Lindsay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioners, we have three department presentations for you today. We'll be starting with the District Court on page 730 of your binder. And Judge Gearing and Ellen House are here to present, so I will hand it over to them.
Crack open this big old thing.
We need more space up here to handle this. You're going to get a workout.
What page? 730?
731, yeah.
God, that's about halfway through.
Now I'm over here dealing with kids, too.
In addition to, there should be two things if you, if you care to, in addition to your budget book, their organizational chart is on page 35 of your organizational chart pack. So as Ellen's talking through her organization, you'll have the chart in front of you as well. So you've got three things in front of you, right? You have PowerPoint, you have a budget book, you have a chart.
Thank you.
It's going to be wonderful. Page what is the orb chart?
35.
Ellen, how come you get to be first in the fishbowl?
I don't know. It's a privilege, though.
You've got so much experience in the courtroom.
Maybe that's it.
They say, let's put you in front of the jury and the.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Ellen House. I'm the court administrator for the 18th Judicial District. The mission of the 18th Judicial District is to provide fair and just services in a courteous and timely manner. The district courts are divided into 31 different judicial districts across the state of Kansas. As you can see, the 18th is made up solely of Sedgwick County. We have 28 elected judges, two appointed administrative hearing officers, and one FTE pro temp judge. Included in today's presentations, we're going to talk about the District Court General Fund. That includes the administration budget, which involves the judges, the aides, the court reporters, and the administrative office. Court services, which includes our probation officers, our PSI writers, pre-sentence investigation writers, our child custody investigations, and our juvenile services. We'll talk about the clerk of the court, who covers the ministerial paperwork for the entire court system. Our district court information technology department, because we have our own computer system, our drug testing fund, and then also our parenting classes. Those are all out of the county general fund. Now, also, under the district court's umbrella is the court trustee's office. They are a non-tax office. They bring in revenue that pays for all of their expenses. And then we also have what is called the ADSAP Fund, the Alcohol Drug Safety in Action Program, and it's also a non-tax fund. This is our organization chart. As you can see, we have a chief judge, and then also the rest of the elected judges, their administrative assistants, and the mediation coordinator. I work for the chief judge, and then under me are all the non-judicial parts of the court. In addition to my people, judge also is over the child support hearing officers, who are state-paid positions. And then also, we have our court trustee's office, who is appoint, the court trustee is appointed by the chief judge, and then his attorneys and legal assistants. Under the general fund, the Kansas District Courts were the trial courts in Kansas, created through the Kansas Constitution. We cover everything from your most basic traffic ticket clear up through medical malpractice cases, small claims cases, capital murder, care and treatment cases, just everything that goes through the court system comes through our court. Adoptions, marriage licenses, divorces, everything. The way that the general fund portion of our budget breaks out, about 75% of it is made up of statutorily required expenses. Attorney fees for court-appointed attorneys are the majority of it. As you can see, almost 58% of our budget goes towards that. The rest are like psyche valves, transcripts, interpreters, jury fees, that sort of thing. The other, that's in the dark green, that makes up 25%, pays for all of the operating expenses for our nearly 300 employees, which, you know, our desks, our paper, our pens, everything like that. The Office of the Court Trustee, which again, is a non-tax fund, they are state employees and follow the Kansas Court Personnel Rules, but because of the way the statute is written, their paychecks and benefits are processed through the county. We pay approximately, or reimburse the county approximately $300,000 in administrative charges for that. The trustee's office is divided into two areas of service. We have the 4D office and the non-4D office. Title 4D are those cases that involve state assistance. If they have some sort of food stamps or Medicaid, that sort of thing. If there's any involvement, they are a 4D case. There are 57 people who work in that office. They cover about 23,000 cases and collect about $40 million a year in child support. July 1st of this year would have normally started year nine of a 10-year contract. However, DCF decided this spring that they wanted to go out for bid again for that contract. So right now, our contract is good through the end of September, and we do not know if the trustee's office will have that contract after this or not.
Okay. So DCF makes that decision? So we don't have any input?
None.
Okay.
Again, there are no general tax fund dollars used for this, as it's 100% self-supporting. Our non-4D side is set up under local rule 423. They charge 4% of collections. There's about 11 employees in there that cover 6,500 cases. They almost collect as much as the 4D side does, but again, there are no general fund tax dollars used for this program. Now, whether or not DCF selects what?
I just, I just figured out that, I was looking for 40, the number 40.
Oh, 4D, sorry.
You're saying 4D. So I've been looking.
4D.
Then you go non-40, I'm going, what? My apologies, my apologies.
That's okay. Whether or not DCF goes with the court trustee's office for their full-service bid or not, the non-4D office will remain. As you can see, overall, the district court's budget has gone from 10 million in 2021 to 9 million in 2022. That is a decrease mainly caused, or mainly seen in the, the 4D section of the court trustee's office. And that has to do with the way that the contract payments are paid. That would be changing going forward. Of our total budget, you can see 38% is in the general fund, and almost 62% are non-tax funds. We have several challenges and opportunities facing us. The first is the child support contract. We will transition away from being the prime contractor of this contract. Even if we are successful in getting the work done, who we contract or subcontract with now, the company Veritas, they will become the prime bidder, and we would subcontract with them going forward if the new bid is successful. And that's why there's a difference in the, in the payments and the cost. We also need to create suitable space for three Court of Appeals judges and staff. We've talked about this for the past few years, and it has now come to be reality. We now have three Court of Appeals judges from Sedgwick County who all have requested space in this courthouse. We have literally turned a couple of lobbies on the fourth floor into office space right now. We've shut them down as, as public lobbies and have opened them as Court of Appeal Judge offices, because we had nowhere else to put them. We need to look at expanding courtrooms and chamber space in the main courthouse to provide flexibility as new judicial positions are created by the Kansas Legislature. Again, this is something that we talk about just about every year. However, we have reason to believe that, not this year, but very likely next year, we will be receiving from the Kansas Legislature either a new. the Kansas Legislature either a new, probably a magistrate position for this district, not a, not a full district judge, but a magistrate. And that probably really doesn't matter to you, because it's still a body that needs an office and has staff, so. When we talk about the district court's needs, I, I talked a little bit earlier about the fact that we do civil cases, we do divorce cases, we do adoptions and care and treatment. That doesn't have a lot of influence on the rest of the county. However, our criminal cases have a big influence. Even though we are a separate branch of government, we don't operate in a vacuum. We must partner with our people, with people in the county and around. There was a, an editorial in last weekend's paper that I think spoke very well to the situation we are in. And even though it was talking more to the Kansas Legislature about funding the courts, I, I think it made a very nice statement that I'd like to read. It says, "Even in a normal situation, our courts would be in danger of collapse, but this is no normal situation. Our courts are now under immense pressure to seat juries, conduct trials, and move cases after the justice system ground to a halt in the spring of 2020. Even with sufficient funding, our courts would be stressed, but our lawmakers now ask the courts to solve their constituents' problems and bring criminals to justice at a faster pace than normal and with even less money. The backlog spills over into other areas of government, including jails and out onto our streets." So that gets me to our next challenge or, or opportunity, which is, as you know, we're partnering with the DA, the sheriff, Wichita Police, et cetera, to implement a new statewide case management system, which is now estimated to go live in spring of 2022. But the biggest thing is addressing the backlog of cases that have accumulated during the COVID pandemic. I was asked to look at just murder cases for a news report, and we looked at the pending murder cases from April thirtieth of 2020 to April thirtieth of 2021. And I can tell you that they went up by forty-seven cases. And that, as you know, doesn't only affect the courts, that affects who's sitting in the sheriff's jail, that affects the work that the DA is trying to do. And so, we're all in this together, trying to solve this problem. Now, in doing so, that gets us to our one decision package that we are asking for this year, which is additional judge pro temp hours. In order to address this great backlog, we have brainstormed and come up with an idea that we think will be successful, and that would be to have a judge pro temp position available to handle all preliminary hearings, which would then allow our ten criminal judges to do other hearings and help move these cases along. I have it listed as one additional FTE position. It's really not an FTE position in the personnel side of things, but it would be a full-time position in hours, contract hours. We would probably have three people that would cover that, that one slot to cover the, the docket. And I'm gonna let Judge Garing speak more about that, because that's more on the legal side, so.
So, thank you.
So, just maybe to back things up, to understand how criminal cases typically work their way through the system. You'll have the prosecutor's office charging somebody with a crime. The next step would be a first appearance, where they appear before a district judge. They're notified of their charge, they're notified of their bond, if, if a bond is set, appointed an attorney, if they can't afford an attorney, and then they're given a next date, which is a preliminary hearing date. So what we are proposing, and we've, I've, I've conferenced with the prosecutor's office to try to develop a way that we can have our ten trial judges committed to, to doing jury trial work, so that we can move these cases through, and to have the preliminary hearing aspect of the criminal case being handled by a pro temp. So the idea and the concept would be that, once we get preliminary hearings set, we would have a preliminary hearing docket. That docket would be run by the pro temp judges. Once the preliminary hearing is over, the typical life of a criminal case is that the defendant would be bound over for trial, and at that point, the case goes on to a trial docket. And the idea here is to free up our ten criminal judges to, to work jury trials and to relieve them of the time requirements of doing preliminary hearings and, you know, the, the work associated with that. So it's, it's an effort to make smart use of the trial judges that we have and to create a more efficient process of moving these things through, because we're gonna have to work faster and smarter to get at the backlog that we have. But I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have on that idea. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Howell has one?
Yeah.
I always have to have a question.
[laughing]
Thank you for being here, Honorable Judge, and thank you for what you do for Sedgwick County. But I am, I am curious. I mean, to be clear, the, the, the judges that we have that are district court judges here in this courthouse, they're considered state employees, and their salaries are paid for by the state legislature.
Yep.
But we're talking about someone who would be paid for Sedgwick County property tax dollars. Have, have we approached the state and asked them for support of this position?
Well, I, so what we can do, and what I can do, is ask for new judgeships in Sedgwick County. I've done that last year. It was, it was promised to be part of the, of the package that OJA submitted to the state. You know, between the promise made and the budget submitted, those positions didn't get put into the package submitted to the state. It wasn't part of the package submitted to the state this year. I've indicated to the Supreme Court that it would be my desire that we would have two additional magistrate positions added to the Eighteenth Judicial District next year, along with a full-time district judge. I've communicated to the Supreme Court what the caseload is for our current judges. But at this point, and I, I don't disagree with anything that you've said, this is an ask that the county pay for, a position that would otherwise be, doing duties that would otherwise be done by a state-paid district judge. But the reality is, if we don't get one, then we have to figure out a way to move these cases until, you know, relief comes from Topeka. And if, you know, so this is, this is not intended, I think, to be a permanent position, but more of a placeholder position until we get the relief that we've asked for from Topeka.
So, is the state providing the three appellate court judge positions? These are new to Sedgwick County?
Yes.
And the magistrate's also new, and that's also approved? Do we have one magistrate coming in?
We don't have a magistrate coming in. I've, I've asked, I've asked for the positions, but, you know, whether or not the, the Supreme Court adds those to the budget for, for next year or not, I, I don't know. Now, the appellate judges, those judges have been appointed, they have been confirmed, and they are on the bench. Statutorily, if they ask to be stationed in Sedgwick County, then, you know, the statute says that I've gotta provide office space for them.
And I, and I think that's, that's actually great for this community to have them here. I'm glad to know that.
Yeah.
I misunderstood Ms., Ms. House. I thought she said we had one magistrate coming in. And I'm a huge fan of the idea of magistrate judges. I think it's a good mix for this community to have some magistrates available. Those magistrates, if and when they're approved, they would also be considered state, state-paid employ-
That's true. Yeah. So, so whether you're a magistrate or a district judge, those are state positions. They would be presumably selected in the same way new district judges and new magistrate judges selected in Sedgwick County. Depending upon when those positions are added, they're either be filled by partisan election, or they would be appointed, you know, depending upon the timing, and then have to run for election, just like any other judge that's added or replaced.
So, just to make, just to make sure I understand, we did ask, in fact, we, we have asked, in fact, for additional judges in Sedgwick County, and as of right now, the request in Topeka has not been answered. Have they not, have they answered and said no? Or they answered and said, or, or they just not answered the question at all?
Well, so, a couple of years ago, I asked for a new, I asked for two magistrate positions. I was led to believe that that would be part of the budget, but that was, that was the COVID year. So, you know, once COVID hit, everything sort of got taken off track, and, you know, who knows what happened to that. So then, this year, the, I assumed that my request from last year would, would carry over, so I didn't, I didn't make an affirmative request. But I have indicated to those in Topeka that, when you put your budget together for next year, I need, you know, my needs have now increased from two magistrates that I asked for last time I asked, to now I need two magistrates and I need a district judge. We may not get three positions, but if we get one position, we have no space for that judge or, or his or her staff.
We obviously need to prepare, we obviously need to prepare for that. And so, so to be clear, you're, you're working through OJA and their, and their requests are going through them. I don't know if it would be-
Yeah, the first, so the first step is for me to let them know what our needs are. And then, it's a little early for them to begin preparing their budget, but I need, I want them to know what our needs are, so that when those people are meeting and they're putting together their ask to the legislature, they at least know what, what our requests are down here in Sedgwick County.
I guess, I don't know if it would be offensive to the Supreme Court or offensive to your office, but I think it might be interesting for us to, you, to make our request legislatively by introducing a bill into, into the judiciary, the House or Senate, and ask for, with three, you know, to the, to the extent they're not really answering, answering the question, we have this great need, I think we should, you know, try all strategies. And so, I don't want, I don't want to defend anybody in the process, but I do think if we have to introduce a bill and push it legislatively, we ought to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, thank you for your service, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for preparing before us.
Any other, any other questions?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. Thank you both for being here today. I, I have a couple of, like, big-picture kind of things that I know that you and I have had a couple of conversations about specialty courts.
Sure.
So I have kind of a, a broad question to ask you, and I don't expect you to answer it right now, but I pose it as this. What percentage of the sentences that come out of our courts focus on rehabilitation of the individual being charged?
Sure. So, the, the easiest way to answer that question is that there, there is a sentencing grid that creates presumptive sentences for people that are convicted of crimes, and that, if you think of, of the severity level of the crime on one axis and criminal history on another axis, where they, where they intersect is where the legislature has determined whether those sentences are presumptive probation sentences or presumptive prison sentences. So, the, the, probably Reader's Digest condensed answer to your question is that anybody that falls in that presumptive probation box, the goal of the court and the goal of the probation officers supervising that probation is to have a successful completion of probation. And there, you know, are any number of, of resources available in, you know, the, the probation office or court services to, you know, to throw at these people if they want the help. But it's, it's always our goal to have a successful completion of probation. Now, in terms of specialty courts, that's where you get into what I like to call a more intensely focused probation. So if, if the problem, if, if the crime of conviction is somebody breaking into cars and stealing stereos, that may or may not be driven by a drug addiction, may or may not be driven by alcohol addiction, may not have anything to do with any of that stuff. So, those people typically wouldn't benefit from some type of specialty court. You know, the, the idea of a specialty court is to get at the root causes of those things, to intensely address that aspect of their lives so that they can successfully complete probation.
What is the success rate of your drug court?
You know, I don't know that, but Ellen could, could find those statistics out and get them to you.
Okay. Do you have, and I'm sure the two gentlemen over there, our DA and our sheriff, will have these, but I'm just curious, you know, how many people in our court system that haven't quite made it to jail, to jail yet, do you believe have a mental health issue or a drug addiction?
Hmm. You know, it's, I, the, the number isn't slight. I mean, it's a significant number. I don't know that I'd be prepared to parse it out and give you a percentage. But, you know, there's, there's, it, it's not infrequent or uncommon for there to be a drug problem in the background of a lot of these cases. Mental health problems are less frequent than drug issues, and they are correspondingly harder to deal with, because oftentimes, you're dealing with people that have conditions that will never go away. They have to be managed long-term. They don't like taking the meds that have been prescribed to them, so they often self-medicate with illegal drugs. So you have, you know, a drug problem going along with a mental health problem, and trying to get at both is, is a huge challenge, and oftentimes exceeds the resources that we have to offer them on probation.
So what is a successful completion of probation? Just going to their appointments, showing up when they need to show up? Is that a successful completion to you?
Well, a successful completion, usually, you know, depending upon, again, the, the crime charged and the presumptive sentence, but your, your term of probation is typically a twelve-month period of probation or a twenty-four-month period of probation. On a more serious crime, it may be a thirty-six-month period of probation. But, you know, they're asked basically to, you know, don't commit any new crimes, we want you employed, we, we basically want you to live a law-abiding life for twelve months or twenty-four months. And if you can do that, your probation is successfully terminated, and, you know, you're off case. You, you're done.
So I know that we could probably talk about this for hours and hours, but I mean, the point that I'm trying to make, and that I hope everybody understands crystal clear, is that it should be all of our goal to get people out of our courts.
Sure.
I don't want you guys to have to come up here all the time and ask us for more space, ask us for more judges. I think it's important, like, what are we doing as a whole to get people out of our courts? I just asked the question, they deferred building a new jail in 2009. What was the reason for that? I don't know. I can only gather, because I don't, I wasn't here at that time. But you build more court space, are you gonna fill up with more people? And so I wonder how we can think about a restorative justice-type of system that is focused on the system, not necessarily the people that are coming through the system, but the system as a whole. And so, I, I'll quit taking up our time now, but that's a really big discussion that I think we've got to start talking about in a serious way to eliminate people, eliminate the need for so much space for courts. If we can help people with addiction issues, mental health issues, maybe build on specialty courts that will actually rehabilitate folks. That's really the goal.
Sure.
So I love our conversations. We've had a couple before. I hope that we can maybe talk about, really, what it will take to make those ideas come to fruition, so that we can really get people back to normal, right? Restore them so that they are productive members of society.
Sure.
So, thanks for being here today.
Happy to have those conversations.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge, thanks for being here today. I'm not sure you're the right one to answer this question, but I'll, I'll pose it, because I know the right people are in this room someplace, okay?
[laughing]
I know Odyssey has been pushed off until 2022, and that's gonna impact the sheriff, the DA, the judges, IT, and I don't know where the implementation of Odyssey is in our budget. Is it under IT? Is it under each of these different departments? I, I just don't know how that we're paying for Odyssey to get it on the road.
That, that would be beyond my area of expertise.
Commissioner, if I can address that. I think that's one of the things that's missing in the, in the budget at the moment, but we do have a technology contingency of a million dollars that's set aside, so that when we do know how that looks, we can get it in the right spot.
Can you speak up just a little? I'm sorry.
I can. I'm sorry. I forget that I need to project when I'm sitting here.
And I can't hear, so.
We have a technology contingency, and we'll talk about that during our budget reviews on Friday. So it's not anywhere specific in the budget, because we don't know where to put it. But we do have budget authority set aside, so that when we do know where it needs to go, we can get it there.
Okay. The judge may be able to answer this part of it. I don't know. We may need some of the other folks to help, too. But are we on track for that to be implemented?
Yeah, that's a good question. We were- Yeah, that's a good question. We were slated to go live with Odyssey in February. There, I, I, I think that as the go-live date got closer and closer, and as the list of things that needed to be accomplished in the 18th Judicial District to have a successful transition, you know, once that comes in a sharper relief as you get closer, OJA made the decision to postpone our going live in an effort to address some of the problems and issues that, that are outstanding in order to have a smooth transition. They asked me if I had a preference as to where we should be on the, on the runway of the go-live date. I selected the, the, I wanted us to be last because my thought process is that we're a large enough judicial district that it would be nice to see other large judicial districts transition. They have a lot of the same issues that we have, and I just really didn't want to be the guinea pig for figuring all that stuff out on the job. You know, a lot of the issues that we have, Johnson County will have, Shawnee County will have, Wyandotte County will have. And it, it was my hope that if this, this system is successfully implemented in those judicial districts, then a lot of the problems that were outstanding that needed to be solved here will have already been solved and that we would have been a smoother transition into Odyssey by going last. So I think currently we're slated to be either at the end of the year or the first of next year for our transition.
Good. One of the recommendations when we were talking to Judge Biles was that we form a working group here locally, and I think we did that. Is it still meeting? Are we progressing with that working group?
Well, I know that our IT department is in, is in regular communication with OJA's IT department and Tyler Technologies' IT department. The degree, and, and at some point in time, when we get closer to that go-live date, sort of the stakeholders kind of retreat into their respective agencies, and that's kind of what we had done. The extent to which our IT department is still coordinating with other Sedgwick County agencies, I don't know. I'd, I'd have to ask our IT department and get back to you on that. But I know our IT department is in regular communication with Topeka.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. And thanks, Judge.
Yep.
Okay, Judge, I don't see any other questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chairman, I might add here, Commissioner Dennis, to your point, sheriff and DA are both getting up today. We, the sheriff, DA, and judge will try to make an effort to stay during each other's session because they're so interlocked. So hopefully we can get the budget discussions done. And if there's any group discussion we need to have with all three of them since they are also interconnected, there will be time at the end to do that. And, and the Odyssey questions can come up. I don't know who's, is Mark next or, when the DA gets up, he can also address the Odyssey component from his perspective as well.
Okay. And we will be on page 712 for the District Attorney's Office next, and Mr. Bennett is here to present.
I think, I think while, while Mark is getting ready, if you flip over your, his org chart is on page 34, if you want to look at it.
Say what? Okay. Thank you.
Give, we'll be back in a second.
Commissioner Dennis, I'll tell you what, while he's out, I'll just take the opportunity real quick. Commissioner Cruz had a couple of questions. I'll just take a second here and answer a couple as if I can. You asked about the percentage of people who are given an opportunity for rehabilitation. So what, as Judge said, that's probation. Statewide, the sentencing-
Well, I guess we need to determine the definition of rehabilitation.
There's, yeah, there's a, I guess, might put it a different way, within the community. There are people who I suppose you could say sending somebody to the penitentiary has some rehabilitative component, but that's not going to take place in Sedgwick County. It's going to take place in the penitentiary system elsewhere. In terms of keeping people in the community and placing them on some opportunity for rehabilitation, diversion, probation, you know, something other than an adjudication and go to prison, I can tell you is this, the Sentencing Commission, which is a statewide entity that works with, with the legislature to track all, and you look at their reports sometimes, runs over 100 pages, and it just gives you granular detail about the criminal justice system in Kansas. Their, their last several reports, again, 2020 is an anomaly, but historically it's about 70% of people who come into a courtroom walk out on some degree of supervision, not going to the penitentiary. So 70%, if you just use a fairly concise definition of opportunity for rehabilitation, 70% statewide are given probation. So that's as close to an-
What's the recidivism rate of those 70%?
Then you, then you have to break that down in terms of, on the probation side, whether it's recidivism means simply being revoked or being revoked and sent to the penitentiary. Recidivism can also be on the back end of that. They've been to the penitentiary, now they're on parole, and how often do they recidivate on parole. KDOC's numbers actually are fairly, fairly good compared to the national average. They have a, they contend that they have a very low percentage rate, but that's going to be parole specific. So this is again, an all afternoon conversation.
Sure.
I just wanted to give you as quick an answer as I could on that one question.
Appreciate that.
And the second one was, oh, there's something else you asked. Oh, drug, mental health.
How many people in our court system, mental health and drug addiction?
Okay. 2020, oh, by the way, I just got this before Jeanette's screen goes off. I'll answer another question first, so she doesn't have to jump up here and open the screen for me again. In, with regard to success rates on drug court, in 2020, 50% were successful, 48% were revoked, 2% were administrative transfers. I have a working knowledge of what administrative transfer means, but I won't try to-
Department of Corrections.
Okay, DOC, yeah. So, yeah, that's right. That's what that means. So, so there's that. And then the other one was mental health. The judge, it's a difficult question for a judge to answer because the judges know when mental health is raised as an affirmative defense. I am not guilty by reason of, we don't call it insanity in Kansas, it's mental disease or defect, but the traditional insanity defenses, as people commonly understand that. Unless that is raised, judges may not see that. And so judge may not have been in the best position to answer that question. I can tell you though, because we do get that information from defense counsel in terms of mitigation, in terms of negotiations, in terms of, you know, the, the common discussion that goes along with a case. Also, I know from talking to the sheriff, because he has to, especially people in custody while they're awaiting a trial, he has to administer to their, to their needs, that depending on how one defines mental health, including episodic depression, because I've been arrested and now I'm very depressed about, you know, the status, my future, mental, drug-
Mood disorders.
Mood disorders, drugs, alcohol, et cetera. If one puts all of those things into the bucket, you're talking north of 20, of two-thirds of people in some degree of confinement in, in the United States would be in that category. Jeff can speak to Sedgwick County specifically, but I know everything I've looked at, from jail population to federal prison population, state prison population, trying not to, to, because there are some distinctions between the, the three. Jail being local, state being prison, or excuse me, prison being state level and federal prison obviously being the federal level. But, but that is a fairly consistent number when you look across the country. 66% of folks who are involved in the criminal justice system have something that could be diagnosed as needing some degree of, of assistance, whether that's drug treatment, mental health treatment, combination of both. Now, I see I've lost another commissioner. The more I talk, the more you guys just peel off here. So if I, if I never shut up, maybe everyone will even turn the lights off on me, so.
This is not a judgment on your presentation skills, of course.
Judgment on my, I'm used to it, trust me.
Is this how you capture your jury?
Absolutely. I just bore them to tears. Everybody walks out on me. All right. So, I mean, this is the, the sort of the overview of the stuff most of you know anyway, but I'll give a quick review and get us up to the, to the main subject matter. I'll repeat this when Commissioner Howe comes back, but much like the presentations from the courts and what I expect from the sheriff, my, my requests here are fairly modest today. But I am going to spend my time putting you on notice as to some of the larger issues because there are some needs that are coming, maybe even come this budgetary session. I'm just, it is hard right now to get your arms entirely around where we are in, in light of COVID and in light of frankly, some other national trends. So before I shoot from the hip and say, here's what I want or need, I want to, I'm going to give you the information today and reserve the right for some, to come back at some point in the very near future with some more information. Because I, I feel like we are on a, we're in a very unusual time, and I don't think that goes with, you know, that surprises anybody, not only in terms of COVID, but in terms of the criminal justice system and the way it's being looked at nationally. So overview, mission of the office, very obvious what we do here. We've got certain things that are impacting our operations. You know, mentioned Odyssey. That has just sort of been looming over our heads now for the past couple of years. I do think it's going to be a, it's going to have an impact. The timing will be important. I will say that a year ago, 18 months ago, I was very worried. I am still concerned, but we have had productive discussions with Supreme Court and Justice, Chief Justice Biles in particular. In fact, last late summer, I guess it was, I was in a, it was the first time I've ever experienced this. I was on a Zoom call with every single member of the Supreme Court of Kansas, talking about Odyssey and our needs. And they were very open to have that discussion. They want to get it right too. And so we're, it's, it's a work in progress. I would add one thing to the comment that there's a million in reserves. I would say that, I don't speak to how that's going to be spent, but I think human resources are going to be a component of this. There is no, that I'm aware of, no turnkey software that one just, you don't go to Best Buy and buy it off the shelf, plug it in, and watch it download and hit next six times. This is going to take people with expertise beyond my, my abilities or, you know, these are going to take human resources. Human beings are going to have to get down and then, and figure out how to make this software package from Tyler Technologies workable not only for Stanton County and Gove County and smaller counties, but also for Sedgwick County. So it's a work in progress, but, but that is a thing that is going to impact my office, the sheriff's office, obviously the courts, the clerks. I mean, I'm, I don't want to overstate it, but I can't think of a component of this courthouse that will not be impacted in some fashion by the implementation of Odyssey. The decentralization, we're still trying to, to work our way through that, I think. Judge Garing didn't bring it up specifically, but I think even his ask for the pro temp, call it a county paid for magistrate position that'll turn in hopefully to a state paid for, even that is really a function of, or a reaction to the COVID pandemic and the decentralization. Having such a pro temp judge here would allow us to have prelims continue to take place without having to set aside days at a time that can't be used for jury trials while a judge is doing prelims. That is a, that is a reaction to, that is a product of the decentralization that took place several years ago, and also obviously COVID. Crime trends, we'll talk about that to some extent, and the fact that Sedgwick County unfortunately has not been immune to the crime trends that are really hitting the country right now. Salary enhancements, I will talk to some extent about salary. This is no, nothing unusual. The sheriff was up here a few weeks ago talking about the need for his folks, but I'm losing people. And, and I was at a national conference over the weekend, National DA's Association, and I'm not alone. High turnover rate based on the caseloads that prosecutors are expected to handle. There's an American Bar Association standard on how many cases a defense attorney can ethically handle. And once they reach a certain point, they are ethically obliged to not take any more cases. And so the public defender's office in Sedgwick County has been in a position where they have had to shut down and not take additional cases. I don't have that luxury. There is no corresponding ABA standard for prosecutors. Prosecutors basically are told is, we got two choices. Suck it up, prosecute the cases, or turn them away at the door. Now, I, I don't think I have the luxury of telling the citizens, sorry, we're full. We can't do it. All I can do is take on more. And when I talk to some of my fellow colleagues around the country about how many cases we're covering, myself included, that I was, as an elected district attorney, I've got 13 murder cases that I'm personally prosecuting. I don't say that for a pat on the back. I just tell you that everybody's chipping in here. And it is a grind. And I'm not asking for sympathy, but I'm, I am going to say that there are certain things that are affecting my folks and why I've got six openings right now in the trial division out of 25 some odd lawyers. So that is something I need to bring to your attention. But before I shoot from the hip, I'm asking for, we're doing some salary study comparisons to other jurisdictions around the state. I'll say one other thing here while I'm on the subject so I can move on, but one other thing that is unique to the folks I'm worrying about is, I, you know, a GED won't get it done, a bachelor's degree won't get it done. I need folks, I have to have folks with law degrees. And that is not an inconsequential life decision for people. I had, you know, when I went to, I sent a child off to State University three years ago. She's going to finish her junior year this year. And I saw what she's paying for salary, for tuition. And I, I thought back and laughed. I paid 618 bucks my first semester at Case State in 1988. I tell her that and these kids just laugh, you know? It seemed like, you know, was, was the world black and white at the time, you know? It's nine grand a semester. It's, you know, what, or nine grand a year now to go to state school. So I asked my staff, just an internal, we're not even, I haven't even got all the results in, but what's your student loan, what are you carrying? Anonymously, don't tell me, but what's, and I asked for an anonymous survey. And 79% of my attorneys who graduated from Washburn are carrying debt, just law school debt, not undergrad debt, of 86 grand. 74% of the KU grads, this is, as a Case Stater, it pains me to give it a shout out to KU, but it's actually a little cheaper to go to KU. Who knew? 84,000 is what the average law school debt, not undergrad debt. So I got kids, I got people working for me, coming, making the decision to come to work for this community in my office, to be prosecutors, trying to do, the job description is to do the right thing for the right reason every day. I, I may sound trite, but it's, it is absolutely the truth. And they're walking in carrying at least 85 to 90,000 dollars in debt, in law school debt alone. And if they went to undergrad, which they obviously did, unless they were independently wealthy, they got more debt than that. And you can go to some of the law firms here in town, and I found this out last week, some of the bigger law firms, and not everybody's going to get a job with those folks, but they pay literally twice what I can pay a starting attorney in this office. So I didn't want to digress into this, but, you know, I don't want, you remember with the first thing you hear and the last thing you hear. So I wanted that to be the first thing you heard. Office overview, we've got attorneys, units who handle gang crimes, domestic violence, financial crimes. IED is something I'm, for, most of you are familiar with briefly because I, I know our newest commissioner may not have heard this, but it was a program we started a few years ago. Initial assessment, DACA is what we call it, and then really what it is, it's an opportunity for people charged with low-level crimes to be given a plea offer right off the bat. This is, this is it, everything. What do you want to do? And, and a lot of folks over the last, let's see, seven, eight years now, take advantage of it. It keeps them out of the flow of the normal court system, and they just get on, down, down the road. And, and it's been really, really successful. So that's what that means. Trial Division one and two, just general trial divisions in our office. Those are other things we do, consumer protection. We have appellate office attorneys, one of whom, by the way, is one of these new state court appellate judges, one, Leslie Ishewa, from this jurisdiction, was the first former Sedgwick County DA, active Sedgwick County DA, actually, maybe even former, who became, was nominated by the governor and is now a judge with the Kansas Court of Appeals. And I'm very proud of her for doing that. It's just a remarkable achievement to be selected from all the lawyers in the state of Kansas to be on the Court of Appeals, handling the appellate process for the citizens of the state. So she came out of our appellate unit, just sort of, I think speaks to the quality of the attorneys in that unit. Juvenile offender, child need of care, traffic, drug court, probate, which is the, we think of that as being like wills and estates, but it's also the care and treatment cases, and then we have diversions. The one priority right now that I have, the one ask on the table today is this technology specialist, and this is really a function of the number of trials coming down the pike. We have somebody who has to help us. We have a trial specialist right now, and what she does is, I have body cameras that I need to present to a jury, and it's hours worth of, we'll go through and watch them, but I need her to cull down maybe a 15-minute section of cops standing there with the 45 seconds that's germane to, you know, so what somebody said, what somebody saw. Here's, I look down, there's the gun. I want to watch, the jury doesn't want to watch, you know, 45 minutes of it when it's 45 seconds is relevant. So she cuts it down. She puts it in a presentation that's, that's- She puts it in a presentation that's, that's presentable for a jury. She helps us with redaction of statements. Sometimes the guy in a confession will say, here's what I did, by the way, I was using cocaine at the time. Okay, that may not be admissible, we have to cut that out. I mean, just a myriad of tools that we, that helps our attorneys make presentations for court. It's, it's putting all of that information together and the old days where I started off when, you know, I'd be standing up in court and, you know, Tim Parker, Jim Punch, Ann Swigle and these people would say, here's a file, go try it. I'd open up the files, about this thick, I'd have a hundred pages, I'd read them that night, go to court the next day. Those days are long gone. Now it's terabytes of information in terms of surveillance cameras, et cetera, and we have to put those in a, in a, in a manner that a jury can digest it in a reasonable amount of time and that's what these, these folks help us do. We've got one and she's overwhelmed and we need, we need help. And so that's my, my technology specialist, I won't call her Lindsay Point Two because Lindsay would, would, that's what we're calling the person because Lindsay's our, not, Lindsay Stover's our person now and she does a great job, but we're, it's more than one person can cover. So, you know, that is the presentation today that I've, in terms of my wants, but while I've got your attention, I think it's incumbent on me, I try to do this every year, is give you sort of the state of the state in terms of what's going on so you can make decisions in a larger context so that you don't get surprised down the road by something I come in and go, hey, by the way, you need to know this and such, and you weren't, you had no warning. So in terms of, you know, you can read through these, I'm not going to read slides to you, but you can see the percentage change over the 2022 budget request. We're trying to obviously keep things very modest, given the COVID situation and the limitations on, on revenue. Same thing with the next slide, again, we're being very, very modest. In terms of crime trends, here's where we're going to start to talk briefly about this larger, larger context, larger situations. As you know, I'm sure if you watched, read the paper, Wichita set an all time record in 2020 for homicides. And before you think, my God, what's going on in Wichita, I would simply say, pull back, look at the nation, Memphis hit their all time record, St. Louis was within, may, may have hit it, last I knew they were very close. 50 or 60 major cities hit, I talked, I was on the phone this morning with the county attorney in Finney County, Garden City, they've had more homicides than they've ever had. Obviously it's to scale, much smaller, but this is happening all over the place and the number of shootings is just through the roof. I went to a National DA's Association this weekend, as I said, this was one of the main topics of discussion. The number of shootings, the number of shell casings on the ground in communities across this country is just going through the roof right now. Oddly enough, property crimes is fairly static, you know, there are pockets where it goes up or down. Drug crime is always an issue, but gun violence specifically is off the charts nationwide. I was on the, whenever I felt, started feeling bad about how many cases we had here, I was on a call, the major DA's, the major cities in America have a conference call once a month, about 50 DAs, and I mentioned how many homicides some of my people were covering and, and one of the other DA says, you know, I've got attorneys that are covering 15, 16, 17 homicides, 18 homicides. One of the other DA said, you know, that's insane, I, you know, we have six or seven and we think we're being overworked. Then the DA from Detroit jumped in and goes, my homicide unit, everybody's carrying 34. And I went, I'll, I'll, I'll take Wichita, you know, that's okay. So everything is to scale, but the point is no one right now that I'm aware of is immune. I've not been at any conference, any call with any DA in a major jurisdiction who says, yeah, things are rosy here, our homicides are down. That ain't happening. So, but because we're, because it's happening nationwide, it is never difficult for them to say, well, here's what's going on in Wichita and if we could just get our arms around it and we could fix it. There is something going on nationally about it. I even say it's COVID, you could say it's the difficulties in, in communities, you could talk about any number of things, joblessness. I mean, I don't think that there is a silver, silver bullet answer, but there's a ton of things going on that's making this a national issue. What does this impact, how does this impact my office and vicariously then the county and you? Increased hearings, increases everywhere. We've got 133 pending homicides, 13 of those are on warrant status, five are off docket for competency, so let's see here, puts us at about 110 right now that are pending, you know, in the courtroom right now that could have a hearing at any point. And that's again, in light of the fact, as Ellen said a bit ago, 47 have been filed since April of last year.
So Mark, can I ask, with that, so what we just heard from Judge Garing's office on their request for 95,000 for that, get these people ready for trial, I don't know if I'm using the right words, so that dovetails, helps you get these cases through?
Yeah, the, so some jurisdictions around the country use grand juries and so they just show up right, and the next thing is motions and a jury trial. We've never done that in Kansas. We've always used preliminary hearings, affords defendants the right to be, to confront their witnesses with an attorney. Grand jury is just me standing there, putting a cop on in front of 12 people who make a charging decision. Frankly, I think that, my personal opinion is the preliminary hearing system that we've always used in this state affords more rights to defendants, gives them a chance to challenge the evidence. And, and so I think it's a better system. The problem is it requires an extra hearing. And so if I'm a judge, I've got to have all these cases that need a jury trial, but before I can get to that jury trial, I have to have a prelim. I, there's only so many hours in the day, so I want to set prelims one week, jury trials the next, you know, every other week, something like that. Well, I'll do three jury trials a month and one prelim week, you know, whatever I set up, what the judges propose, this pro tem judge, the, call it, again, it's a magistrate is what it is, that guy, gal can do prelims every day of the week while the other judges are then freed up to do those jury trials. And it's just, you're going to chew away at that, and how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? Well, there's going to be more people taking more bites of that jury trial backlog with the system that the, that the judge and Ellen have proposed. So I wholeheartedly support their, their effort to get that pro tem position. Plus, I think it'll make a better argument to the legislature next year, Commissioner House, to his point, when we can show how useful it's been. You know, showing the usefulness of something, not just the idea of something, I think is a far more compelling argument.
Okay, thanks.
We got the preliminary hearings, just shows you, you know, despite the fact that we were out of the office for most of April and May, we still had 16,000 preliminary hearings set last year, only off the previous year by about 200. And I will say, and Ellen can correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers I got from the, the court system this year was despite the pandemic, despite using Zoom, despite social distancing and the Supreme Court's mandate that we clean in between every hearing and every witness, we actually had 15,000, north of 15,000 hearings last year. I'm getting the nod that that's actually accurate, so just, I'm proud of the fact that this office stayed open, the courts were open, we didn't just shut down and act like, you know, we couldn't get jobs accomplished. Also 1,900 cases were resolved, criminal cases resolved by plea last year. Again, just a testament to the works, the work of the prosecutor's office, the defense bar and the judges. Whole number, whole one here regarding, if I can get that out of your way. There we go. Another slide here, I'm trying to be mindful of people's time, so I can stop and answer any questions along the way, but you get it. Types of hearings, just again, the number, the number of hearings were held, we are only off about 1,200 from last year in terms of just total number set, and like I said, we actually handled 15,000. All crimes committed in Cedric County, we had 18, was worse than 19. Those are the most recent numbers we've got. Property crimes, see the same ups and downs. We've got one per, you know, sort of a populate, per population of a thousand, that slide there. Violent crimes, same, we're, we're, we're better than we were in 18, but much worse than we were, say 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Again, 9.2 for 1,000 population in terms of violent crime. Again, I'm talking, I'll give you some specific numbers here, murders, rapes, robberies, et cetera, and the, the percentage over time. I do know off the top of my head murders in 2020, which was the category not left there, but it was 59. That's a number that's fairly widely known. So 2020, at least as to the murder category, went up exponentially, even over the numbers you see in front of you. I want, I'm kind of moving along here because I want to get to a couple of, and then slow down for a second here in a minute, but I'll go through these. You're seeing the number of cases charged, homicides. You know, I do remember in 2013, my first year in office, the WPD had 17 homicides, there were 22, I think altogether charged in that year, somewhere SO, somewhere maybe held over from the year before that finally got solved, but, and then to have 90, 59 last year, and when we had 17 in 2013, it just tells you the, the increase we've, we've seen. So this is where I want to kind of slow down here because I know this is a, you know, we start talking about what can we do about this, you know? We can stand here and say, well, it's, it's going on across the country, you know, it's, it's hard to know what the cause is, you know, we just need more help. All right, well, let's, but let's hit, tap the brakes here for a second, slow down and start talking about some, some pretty specific information that's going to be covered in these next couple of slides. The role of drugs, and, and I'm not talking about marijuana, I'm not talking, I'm not the anti weed guy, you know, whatever, methamphetamine, you've heard me say it for years, that's the thing, that's the, the bane of, of our existence right now. In terms of the total number of cases filed, you can see the number in, in 2020, and we filed considerably fewer than we did the year before because we were being very restricted. We knew our court system could not take an influx of the normal, we couldn't process them through like we normally had. Despite the 15,000 hearings we did have, you're still going to have an attorney and a judge and you still have to have that time in front of the court to get things done. So we slowed it down and we didn't file as many of the, the low level crimes. We still had 26% of these cases were, had at least one drug charge. That's not to say it was a drug case, but at least one drug charge. It could have been the forgery or the, you know, say the aggravated burglary of somebody's house, and when they arrested, they still had drugs in their pockets. So it wasn't necessarily a drug case, but they had at least one count of it. More to the point here, you can see this over time, this number hasn't just shot through the roof, but it has gone up incrementally since 2016. The number, the percentage of cases that involve, that have something to do with drugs, this is, is not going away. Now, this is the slide that, that I think you've seen some variation of over the last several years. All right, if it's not marijuana that we're charging people with here, you know, this is not kids with a joint in their pocket. That's not what's driving crime here. If it's marijuana, the only thing we're really charging when it comes to marijuana is people who are distributing, selling it, large quantities. But methamphetamine is really the thing. And so you can see over, in 2020, I think, I want to make sure everybody hears this, it was 18.58% of all cases filed last year, calendar year, involved at least one count of methamphetamine. And you, I think you've heard me say this before, but I'm not talking about a meth charge, that's what he got pulled over for, that's what he had. I'm talking about, they got charged with whatever they were charged with, burglary, theft, murder, rape. When they were picked up, I don't, I didn't charge people for what they did yesterday, what they might do tomorrow. The only way I can get a meth charge on somebody is if they still have it in their person, on their person, excuse me. So this means 18.58% of cases that were charged had methamphetamine in the, on the person, in the pocket of the person we charged when they were arrested. And by way of comparison, you can see that same number over the last five years. And if you want to see, if, you know, you say, what, to what do you attribute the rise in crime, the rise in violent crime, the rise in the number of shell casings on the ground in Cedric County? I know of nothing else that speaks as loudly as this slide in the entire presentation. Methamphetamine is a scourge. You can, you know, you can smoke marijuana at night if that's your thing, you can drink yourself, you know, go buy a bottle of bourbon, beer, whatever, and I know people do that. All right, I'm not the morality police here, I try to enforce the laws. And you, it's possible for you to get up the next day and go to work. You can be a functioning alcoholic. I bear, I would hazard a guess, if I asked anybody in this room to stand up who never knew a functioning alcoholic in their life, we'd all remain seated. Everybody knows someone who's lived that life, that way. All right, I wouldn't recommend it, but it's possible. I, if you've heard me say this before, I don't mean to be, you know, to sound trite and say the same thing over and over again, but I know of no one who can be a functional meth addict. It is a, it is something that changes people in a way that is beyond any other drug I've ever seen. There is a component of violence that goes with this. I just spent the afternoon yesterday helping review a case for the Attorney General in another jurisdiction in the state and methamphetamine was absolutely the driving force in this god awful double murder that took place in another part of the state. So it's not something unique to Wichita, it's not something unique to a part of Wichita or a part of Cedric County. It is a scourge across this state and frankly, this jur, this region and the larger, larger United States. And in fact, for the first time, I heard at this conference this weekend, there's been a recognition on the part of Congress, because there have been very concerned about putting money into the opioid epidemic and putting money towards that, that methamphetamine has sort of been left, left behind. And so on the East Coast where opioids has been the driving force in, in crime and across the, the Rust Belt, they've just kind of forgotten about the rest of the country, mid, middle, I say Midwest, plains states, upper Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Kansas, where meth has really been the, the big issue. And they're starting to recognize that. This slide again, if there's, if there's one slide I would have, could have shown you today, this is it. You want to break down on, on drugs even more specifically, you know, you're talking about, you can see the, the role that, that depressants, or excuse me, that, that stimulants like methamphetamines and amphetamines in general play in our charging. So my takeaway, or the takeaway I hope you all have is that we are, we are getting a lot of work done, there's still a lot of work to do. I think we are in a demonstrably better position than we would have been had we simply shut down last year. I know it did, it came at an expense to the county, to our court system, to my office, to the defense bar, but having resolved north of 1,900 cases last year during a pandemic means that's 1,900 cases we don't have to try to put in front of a jury. So we are in much better shape, but there is still a backlog that needs attended to. I think the judges, the court's request for that, that pro tem judge would certainly help. I need that tech person to help with, to help us get prepared for trial. But long term, and I mean, also saying, short term, I'll, I'll get ahold of Tom once our salary study is completed and once I'm in a position to speak more specifically about salaries, but my office, you know, 12 million dollars in budget, and there's a little, there's some paper clips, some, you know, paper, some software, some computers and some desks. The rest of it is human resources. I have to have bodies to stand up in court who are prepared, talented enough, driven enough to do this kind of work and I have to pay them a salary that makes them, you know, want to come do this. And it's getting, that's a, that's a taller order than it's ever been in my career to do this. And, and I'm not expecting, you know, if you make the decision to go to law school and take on that kind of debt, I don't expect to pass that on entirely to the citizens, but if I want to get good people to do this job, I need to have quality, talented folks. So I'm going to be back here at some point in the, in the very near future talking about that. Couple other final points, just some, some, oh, two final points. One, I know I had been asked to be prepared to talk about domestic violence and the percentage of the hole, I'll just cut to the chase here, 26.3% of our cases filed last year in 2020 had a domestic violence charge associated with them, so over a quarter. And the year before is about 24, 25%. So even during the pandemic, things went up, even as a percentage of that, of the smaller number of cases we filed, we still had more DD cases than we did the year before. One final thing, and I don't want to, I know I've taken up a lot of time and I apologize for keeping you long, but I, you know, obviously this is my one chance to speak to the folks who make these decisions, so I want to make good use of, of this opportunity. But one final thing, and that is, if it sounds a little bit gloom and doom here, I'm talking about murders and, and large caseloads, et cetera, and are we doing anything to change the paradigm? And the answer is yes. You would know, I think, I've talked about this last two years, most of you know also, I was, I was the chairman of the Criminal Justice Reform Commission in Topeka. In 2019, I proposed a bill, which probably got me on the commission and got me, made, decided to make me chair because of this. I proposed a bill to expand the use of diversion in the state of Kansas. There's been some discussion about why diversion is not offered more often, and the truth is we have a very restrictive currently, a very restrictive law that comes to diversion, who's eligible, what it means, and, and it's not something I simply have unfettered discretion to do. So I talked to others around the country about how do you guys run diversion in your states? I recognize you, not only how restrictive we are, but how unique we are in the way we do it. My office runs diversion. At the end of the day, I run a law firm, okay? I don't have clinicians, I don't have drug treatment providers who work for me, I have lawyers and support staff. I wouldn't expect to go to Fullston Seaton Law Firm and say, hey, can you supervise this kid on diversion? They'd look at me like I was, you know, lost my mind. So my proposal to the legislature was we need to figure out a way to allow people who are, who are in the business of supervising people and helping them find resources, et cetera, like probation officers, to allow them to do it. That would allow diversion to be expanded across the state and allow me to take on more people, that would be a harder risk, it'd be tougher to be adequately supervised because I don't have the staff for it. The bill was wild, was really- The bill was wild, was really well received, but then it passed the, the House last year, 123, I think, to nothing, and then COVID shut everything down and died. Come back this session, and very fortuitously, I saw something here. Yeah, literally, they are discussing this bill right now in conference committee, passed the House, passed, passed the Senate. The distinction between the two was where the money went, who got paid, whether it goes into state funds or county funds, and it's in conference committee here, and Representative Owens has given me updates because he was my co-chair on the reform commission, and looks like it's, I, yeah, it looks like it passed, so it's headed to the governor for signature. What this does then is allow me to, to sign an MOU with, we'll just, with Glenda, kind of corrections, and say, will you supervise these folks? That's big. That allows me to put more people over there than I could have otherwise handled. We'll still have a diversion program for people who, you know, low risk, who can still benefit from it, but the higher risk folks can go there. But the bigger difference is, this bill also gives Senate Bill, what's called a Senate Bill 123 money, state funds to help pay for drug treatment for these folks. It's there now. And anybody goes, wait a minute, we're going to give money to drug, you know, drug users, they should pay for themselves. Two answers to that. Number one, we've been doing it for 20 years. But the only way you can get access to it is if you're convicted. You have to wait to be convicted and then you get access to it. That's how we've always done it for 20 years. That's what the, and I don't blame the state for that decision, I think they were trying to be, you know, control the money. And now we've got a 20-year track record of doing this, so we know what that looks like. This bill allows us to do it for folks who are on diversion. What's the likelihood of success, rehabilitation, et cetera, for someone who doesn't also carry the burden of a felony conviction over their head? Loss of job, loss of housing and have all these other collateral consequences? We can start putting people in there. I'm going to go slow here, but that is a game changer unlike any other in my 26 years of career doing this. Nothing has been as dramatic a change as this has the potential to be. I don't want to act like some, you know, it's going to be the cure all for everything, but there's an opportunity there. And you're talking about specialty courts, you're talking about, is there a way to maybe use this program in, in terms of a drug court model? I don't know. I'm not going to say anything too crazy because Garing's in the back of the courtroom is going to go, wait a minute, throw somebody, we haven't talked about this yet. I know. But there's an opportunity here to start taking people out of the flow of the criminal justice system where your two choices are conviction or quittal, that's it. Probation or prison. There's a third rail here now that this state will have as an opportunity that frankly, was never really available on a large scale before. And I hope, and I had the same goal with the I A D program, it was just something we did here ourselves, but it meant a conviction. I mean, people who were just willing to come in and take their lumps and move on just so they wouldn't have to come back to court over and over and over again, I get that. That is successful, there's over a thousand people who have taken advantage of that over the last seven, eight years. It's a thousand cases that I didn't have to assign out and put on more, you know, load on one of my prosecutor's backs, on a public defender's back, on the judges as well. That program alone was so successful. This is even bigger, there's money associated with this. So I think we're in a position, and I hope in a year and two years to come back and say, here's been the benefit of that bill, and it's the reform commission's bill, I'm not taking credit for it, but it, it's just a common sense bill that I think is going to have a major impact. So now all gloom and doom, there's some good to report as well, and literally I didn't time this, that was just Steve Owen sending me that at 2:42. So anyway, I've talked enough, I appreciate your time. Take any questions.
Couple of questions. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Congratulations on that. That's the kind of thinking that we need to start doing across the board. And so I love to hear that other people feel like it's important to start thinking about our criminal justice system in, in a new way. And Mark, I don't mind you being here, I mean, I don't mind having this discussion with those that are in the room today because quite frankly, the three of these departments take up 27.7% of our whole entire budget. I mean, it's important, so I just have a couple of questions. You talked about the rise in gun violence, what do you think is driving that?
One, one is the availability of guns. Between 2008 and 2016, during the Obama administration, the common, as I understand it, what's fairly understood is that we doubled the number of guns on the streets of the United States. I won't talk, I won't hazard a guess at what the motivations might have been for that, but it is simply a fact. We doubled the number of guns on the street. And you heard, if you pay attention to local news coverage of these sorts of things, Gordon Ramsey, our chief, has talked about the, you know, just he's pulling his hair out going, if you're going to have a gun, fine, but lock it up. How many guns the W P D responded to in terms of being stolen from cars in 2018, 2019? The, the W P D started a save a casing program, so if your gun gets stolen, you've at least kept a casing from it, so the cops, if they find it later, can compare it to see if it's the same gun that was used in a crime later. I mean, it's a pretty sad state of affairs when we've got to say, look, when you buy a gun, you know, go ahead and shoot it once, save a casing, so in case, then the very, you know, the likelihood that it's stolen, we might be able to find it later. There's just a lot of guns on the street. That's, that's number one, and I say that without any commentary, it is simply a fact. And then you've got joblessness, you've got economic downturn, you've got any number of other things going on. I will say, the, the number of younger kids turning to guns is, is a trend, not only locally, but I've, I'm hearing about this regionally and nationally. A number of young people who settle their scores with, with guns is, is an uptick that we've not seen in this community since the early 90s. Those are two things I would point out right off the bat.
Okay, so now switching gears to the meth epidemic is what I'll call it.
Sure.
When we talk about the number of cases that have the charge of methamphetamine, in your opinion, what do you feel like will help with meth addiction? In our community that isn't currently here?
Access to treatment? I mean, I, I want to back up and say, first of all, we've got a, you know, 70,000-foot view, I'm 35, the 70,000-foot view, and again, I say, I understand about half the things I say are fraught with a political overt, undertone, so I'm, I'll just be blunt. We've got to secure our borders, and I don't, I'm not talking about immigrants and people, I'm talking about just secure borders because the methamphetamine is coming from Mexico. And that flow is not, has been slowed down. That's nothing I can do, nothing the sheriff can do, that's a national, federal administrative agency's role, so number one, 70,000-foot view, moving down to 35,000-foot. We've got to, we've got to make treatment more accessible. I would also say there is, there is a component to an economic angle to this, and by that I mean, meth to me is a, and maybe I'm wrong, but meth to me is a drug of desperation. I mean, at this point, is there anyone who hasn't seen the pictures of, you know, this is your brain on meth, this is the picture of the, you know, the pretty girl at 19 and then at 27, she was like, she's 87 with her teeth falling out? I mean, is there anybody who's going, methamphetamine, never heard of that, I'll, I'll give that a try, really? No, people know what it is, but it's cheap. It is really cheap compared to what it was 10 years ago. And if you are in an economically deprived situation, you don't have a job, no one you know, no has a job, et cetera. I mean, there, that is a driving factor. That's a tough thing for the DA to tackle, but if we're going to have an honest conversation with it, we cannot overlook, you know, look that over. Now that the 10,000-foot view, it's got to be, it's got to be treatment, more specifically. I had lunch a few weeks ago, about a month and a half ago, with a guy who was a lawyer here in town, a very young, promising lawyer. Don't know what happened, but he dabbled and got himself in trouble with methamphetamine. And I very much thought he was going to be, I thought he might lose his life. And he's three years clean, and he said something to me that I think is, is, I'm, I'm, if he hears this, I will apologize for having the, the audacity to invoke his story here, but it's important because what he said to me was this, there are people who will say you can't get off of meth, that it's the one drug you can't cure. He goes, I'm here to tell you it's wrong, you just got to get the right treatment. So that's a long answer to your short question, we need treatment, we need accessible, affordable, effective treatment. And if you've got money and you've got insurance, it's out there. If you don't, we've got two choices for you. Hope for the best, or spend $30,000 a year on you, putting you in a cell in the Department of Corrections. If you, if you think, you know, for the viewers out there who say, look, this sounds like more handouts, this is more big government stuff, all right, fine, then I have a choice. We're going to spend 30 grand a year to lock people up in the penitentiary. Or, I mean, 10 grand a year, $25,000 a year per person on drug treatment would be, would be a savings, a net savings. Look at it from a purely fiscal point of view, not even a humanitarian point of view, treatment.
What kind of treatment specifically?
It's difficult, but it's got to be inpatient, you know, going home and going to your A A meetings for aftercare is one thing, but you're not going to get over this on your own. The reason he did it, he went, he was in Texas and he said, the first night I was going to walk away, and then I remember the 30-mile drive out into the middle of, of the, the hills of Texas and thought, where the hell am I going to go? So I turned around, went back inside and stuck it out.
So specifically like a medical detox?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Okay, those are my questions, thank you for being here, I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. So a couple of questions, thank you for being here. Have you been able to use any of your new digs yet in this building?
Yes, our charging division is over there now, a lot of our administrative areas over there for the first time in my 24 years in the office. There's empty offices in, in, that I can fill now with, with some new staff, so I should have led with that. Thank you for that, that's been a very beneficial thing to us because we've got some space now that we, we did not have before.
I would say that enough has changed since we did our space study years ago, that I would like to get maybe a new assessment by the courts and by the DA and by the sheriff to kind of find out where we are in those three things because that directly impacts, I already know the courts need more space, we heard that a few minutes ago. But with respect to the sheriff and the, and the DA, it'd be nice to know kind of where we're at again because we are adding some staff, we're certainly expanding what we have to do to keep up with public safety needs. And so I guess I'd just like to get an update, I know, I don't know if we need that officially or, but I just think maybe even anecdotally, how you feel, you know, with your space.
Yeah, I mean, there's, what I'm trying to do is say, right at the moment, sure, I, I feel pretty good. I'm trying to project in a realistic point of view what it'll look like 10 years from now, 15 years from now, which is always difficult, I couldn't have foreseen the 2020, 2021, five or 10 years ago, but, you know, I, my ideal is still, I'd like to take over, you know, have my folks on the second and third floor footprint of the courthouse, but I recognize that's a, that's a long-term goal, so.
Early in your presentation, you talked about your staff potentially, people who have the same credentials as your staff, that they could get paid two times if they did something. What was that other, what was the other?
Private, private firm here in town, I just heard one of the major firms here in town is paying for starting attorneys right out of law school, actually, they're paying 120 and I pay 56.
Okay. I just wanted to find out the details there. And then, just, I'll just say, I can't speak for my colleagues, but for, for myself, I, I would be supportive of the pro temp position for the judges. Certainly making the argument to the state, I think we need to be really passionate and aggressive to make that clear that we don't only want to make this a property tax problem, but I do think we need to get back caught up with what we've got going on here. I think that's, at least for now, this is, this makes a lot of sense, and hopefully in a year from now, we can get something from the state to, to help solve that problem. And along with that, I would, I think that the technology position you talked about would, it does make a lot of sense, I think, I mean, it's very understandable. I, I am curious, out of the, Commissioner Cruz kind of stepped on this a little bit as well, but I guess, when you hear about 133 homicides that are in the system right now that need to be prosecuted or processed, it starts to feel like we live in an unsafe community. I guess what I, and I don't know who does this, maybe, maybe this isn't something you would be interested in doing, but I wish somebody would do this. I like to, I like to classify these crimes and say, out of this 133, these ones are the ones that relate to domestic violence. They had issues going on within this family unit for whatever reason, and maybe some type of counseling would be available that might help with those types of situations, I don't know, but this is domestic violence issues. This over here is drug-related issues, this over here is gang-related issues, and these ones over here are just random acts of violence.
I will tell you that, that in terms of random acts of violence and citizens just being struck randomly by some unknown assailant, the truth is, that is, has always been the anomaly. 85% of women, depends on what year you're studying and what database you pull from, but as long as I've been a prosecutor, the numbers really never change, it's gone up or down incrementally. 85% of women who are killed, they know they're, they're, they're abuser, it's the guy, the guy that used to be in their life or is in their life. You know, you can break it down by racial background, who, who kills the most white people? White people who know the, the guy they killed. Who kills the most black people? Black people who know the guy they killed. These numbers jump out off the page, but the reality is, people aren't roaming the streets looking for unknown victims. Most people commit crimes against their neighbors, against people in their smaller communities, so.
You presented, you presented a lot of metrics, this is really good, again, we don't get the chance to talk to you very, very often either, so I appreciate this opportunity.
You bet.
And I, and I think that, to add to the metrics, I guess to me, as a policymaker, there's that one piece of data I want to make the argument to the world that this is not an unsafe community if you don't do these things. Again, I don't drink alcohol, so let me just say upfront, I don't drink, I, I don't go out late at night, I'm not a gang member, I'm not involved in any types of illicit drugs in any way. So I think my risk of those types of crimes affecting me are pretty small, and I think that if you live a, a life that's kind of in this, you know, live like that, I don't know that you have a lot of risk necessarily in this community.
I want to be careful how I answer that question only because I don't ever want to put, leave the impression that what you're saying or what I'm, what I'm acknowledging is in any way victim blaming or saying if you just were doing these things, you wouldn't have been victimized by crime. So I'm not saying, I'm not going to, I know that's not the point you're making and certainly not the, the point that's being made here, but the notion that random acts of violence are plaguing, is plaguing the city is not in fact the reality that cops and prosecutors are seeing.
Thank you for clarifying that, that's really my point. I, I guess I just want to know, the random acts of violence, what it, how do I quantify that? And is that increasing as well? I don't know that it is, I, I don't have a sense of it.
Well, let's put it this way, there, you know, I don't want to disparage any parts of town, but there are places where methamphetamine use is, oh, well, let's put it this way, the, the chief of police has talked about the, the, the need in terms of his budget across the street, when he has the same conversation with the city council for increased patrol of what he calls the Broadway corridor. So we'll say from 13th to 31st Street South, up and down Broadway, and then the impact that methamphetamine has had on that particular corridor. I'm not, again, disparaging anyone who lives in that area or, or works in that area, but I'm just piggybacking on what the chief has said. And, you know, walk down there at 3 o'clock in the morning and walk around for a while, I couldn't guarantee, Commissioner, that you wouldn't be a victim of random act of violence. But what I am saying is, other than some high crime areas where methamphetamine is more prevalent, more easily accessible, yes, I agree with your statement that random acts of violence are not plag, are not plaguing the citizens in this community.
I, I, I think it's important for us to understand this, and again, I want to focus on solutions that maybe, you know, maybe targeted towards each one of these types of issues that we are kind of aware of, I mean, whether it be mental health or drug addictions or whatever, and I understand that property crime is primarily driven by drugs, I get that, and there's a lot of victims out there that are totally, completely innocent
Absolutely.
Because of theft that happens to support drug habits and things like that. But I just think, you know, you present so many, you present so many metrics, it'd just be kind of nice to understand that more deeply. And then I guess, I, I have one more, I guess one more comment. Well, actually, I actually have two more comments.
Yes, sir.
On, on the one that talks, on slide 22, talking about methamphetamine cases, percentage of total cases filed. You have on the left your total criminal cases, what do you mean, what do you mean by that description?
How many criminal cases were filed in Sedgwick County, in the Sedgwick County District Courthouse by my office on that, in that year? So in 2016, we filed 3,570 criminal cases. Most of them are going to be felonies because the vast, vast majority of misdemeanors are handled by the city court, but in unincorporated areas of the county, we'll handle the misdemeanors. So that's all the criminal cases filed in the, in Sedgwick County in that particular year, and then just, you can see the trends down. Last year, 2020, was the one anomaly because of COVID.
Because of what?
COVID.
Okay, I was just trying to figure that out, and so, okay, that's, that's.
We held back and I told my charging attorney to be very, my charging attorney to be very to be very conservative in our charging, because if we, if we put another thousand cases into the system, I'm not sure where the courts would have stuck us.
I have one more question, then one comment, and I don't know if you had any involvement in the suspended driver's license legislation this year, or the metal theft legislation, do you want to comment on either one of those?
The metal theft legislation, as far as I know, didn't get anywhere.
I don't think so.
The driver's license issue is part of, I need to see what the final act was, but I think if I understood representative.
It went to the governor, it's going to the governor.
Yeah, I say, I think it's going to be signed, I gotta see the final version, because I saw the two different versions coming out of either chamber, but yes, the notion was to try to make people who have their license suspended, first of all, limit the number of opportunities for that to take place, the number of ways that can happen, and number two, and more importantly, once it's happened, limit the costs associated with getting one's license back, so if I go pay things off, can I get my, first of all, can I get my license back immediately, in the past, it's always taken, even after I paid everything off, 90 more days of suspension, which, I get that there was a, probably some delay necessary for it to, you know, be given full effect, but 90 days, really, how about five days, I mean, how about three days, something like that, number one, and number two, that the costs associated with even getting to that point would be lessened, you get three tickets, speeding, run a stop sign, no insurance, you come to the courthouse and the DA's office says, all right, plead to the no insurance, and we'll dismiss the other two counts, so I've now pled to one count, my costs associated with reinstatement fees, it's still, they attribute it to all three counts, that the cop brought me on the side of the street, I have no control over that, and they're trying to ameliorate that, the bigger issue is, so much of the fines and fees that the state lodges are used to pay for the court system, used to pay for other things, and the bottom line is, I say this, I understand, I've got at least one, two former legislators in here, you and the judge, I understand why we do it that way, but I think some courage is going to be needed in Topeka, to say we're going to, we're going to stop funding core services, the courts, public defender on the backs of citizens, on essentially what amounts to, you know, the backs of the poor, and the folks who can't afford to pay their tickets, we need to say, we're going to pay for it out of general funds.
Thank you for working with the legislators this year, I'm very proud of them for at least getting this bill, you know, this bill out, and I suspect it's going to be very, very good for this community, I want to publicly thank Senator Alita Fauz-Kado and Representative Nico Heisel for their work on this bill, there may be others, but I'm at least aware of those two that really ran on the House and the Senate, and then finally, let me just say this, with respect, there's more guns on the street, let me just say, even in this building, we don't allow people to bring their guns in this building, so they leave them in their cars in the parking garage, there's a, there's a lot of places that don't allow people to carry their guns with them wherever they go, so they leave them in their cars, and that's why I think people target cars, because they know people potentially have guns, and they leave them in their cars, and they leave their car, and they go to the interest bank, for example, it's, it's a rich place to do gun thefts, because everyone can't take it inside the building, and on it goes, and so, again, I appreciate this bill, and we have gun lockers, at least gives these people another option, but the reality is, when we, when we take law-abiding citizens, and we train them to carry a firearm, and then we don't allow them to carry the firearm, it ends up in the car, and that's what, that's, I think was fueling a lot of this right now, unfortunately, let's talk about, you know, the younger kids carrying guns, you know, as we know, these children should not have rights to access guns, you know, there's a failure by an adult somewhere when that happens, and so we, you know, we should stand for, you know, adult behavior, when, you know, to take care of the guns that we own, we shouldn't allow children to get access to these guns, but I don't, but we do have to trust adults at some point, and I don't know that I blame the fact that there's more guns, I do believe, I do believe there's some reasons why, why some of these things are happening, but I guess I would say, you know, guns, in fact, you mentioned, I don't know if this would be fair to ask this or not, but if we could, I don't know if you have access to this or not, but with respect to gun crime in Wichita and Sedgwick County, if we could break, I don't know who has the data, but I would love to get access to this type of data, maybe KBI's got it, but to break down, you know, suicide by gun, homicide, that, again, it could be gangs, drugs, domestic violence, where the guns are being used.
It's something I could get from the.
I like to break down the gun violence and understand exactly, you know, who it is, because, because this idea that people with guns are causing all the crime, I don't think that's fair, I think the reality is, that people who don't do those things, who are carrying guns, really aren't the problem.
Yeah, and again, if, to the extent that anybody believes that my comments were directed at gun owners who are rightfully owning guns illegally, that's not the point, my point is, when you put more of anything into a community, it's going to be more readily accessible, and in terms of the gun thefts, the truth is, gun thefts from cars, daylight, nighttime, whatever it may have been, was, was one of the things, gun thefts from homes as well, but in terms of breaking things down, in terms of types of, types of gun violence, absolutely, I can get with the chief, I can get with the sheriff, and we could give you an update here in a couple of weeks in terms of how that breaks down, I will say, final point, I see the sheriff stepping up, so he may be able to address this as well, but one thing I'd say is, suicides by gun is the vast majority nationally of gun deaths, and so when people talk about gun violence and gun deaths, that's also, you got to remember it's in the context, that's why people talk about it in terms of a health crisis, because it's, that's the component that's part of that argument, whether you endorse that or not, is irrelevant, simply the point is, a lot of people die at their own hand by the, by the use of a gun.
And again, not to belabor this, but I just, I just think for us to have, good for us to have clarity exactly how these are being classified, so that when you hear that number, you know what you're talking about.
Sure.
Thank you for your comments, DA.
Real quick, Commissioner, the Wichita Police Department tracks their homicides, DV homicides, gang-related homicides, drug-related homicides, and then sexual assault-type homicides, or the random kind of victims, so they do break those out, so do we, the three homicides we've had, or the two homicides we've had so far this year were drug-related, in reference to the suicide numbers, that's from the forensic science center, they track, they are the component that can track every suicide that happens in the county, not just from the police department standpoint, or Sedgwick County standpoint, but if there's a suicide in Andale, Kansas, they're the ones that will be able to tell you that information.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, robust talk, we need to try to, this is supposed to be a budget hearing, not a.
This is just one more question.
But I know, Commissioner Cruz.
One quick question.
Sure.
Okay, so Mark, have you ever heard the term restorative justice?
Absolutely.
What are your thoughts on that, and you don't have to be long, and maybe this is for a different discussion, but I want to address it here.
I have no problem with it with one caveat, it's not, it's not an idea, it's a, it's got to be a, almost a tactile thing, meaning, it is not something that's just a change of mindset.
Right.
It takes, and a commitment of time and resources, without the resources, the notion of restorative justice is nothing more than a nice idea that has no validity, we've got, if we're going to do it, we have to support it.
So, in the sense.
Financially.
In the sense of, I think traditionally, it's used as restorative justice to change the person that it's being affected, so like, the criminal, or the inmate, or whoever it is, but can we look at it as restorative justice for the system?
It's got to be, I mean, you need to talk to somebody, you need to learn a different way to talk to somebody, to get through to them, good luck, I mean, when you get that figured out, holler, I'm all ears, in the meantime, if you really want to make the change, my idea of restorative justice is the bill I just talked about.
Yeah.
I wanted to change the way diversion is utilized, instead of thinking about it and talking about it and wringing my hands, I went to the legislature, got the law changed, that is substantive, that's something I can measure, that's something that is either going to work or it won't, but it's not an idea, it's a functional reality now.
Right, so if you're not familiar with it, Google it.
There you go.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any else, I don't see any.
Okay, our last presentation today is from the sheriff's office, will be on page 517 of your binder, and I'll hand it over to Sheriff Easter.
Sorry, made the news.
Good afternoon, Jeff Easter with the sheriff's office, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today, in reference to some decision packets that we've worked on, that we presented to the manager and his staff here a few weeks ago, and now will be able to present to you, if you turn to page, should be three in your packet, where we start with the sheriff's office decision packages, the beginning of this slideshow just tells you what we're responsible for, from a statutory standpoint, our responsibilities, those type of things, on package one, as you know, the RMS, JMS, CAD system was approved, we're in the process now of that system being built by Tyler Technologies, one of the things that is going to be required, once it's built and in place, is a 10-year contract that will take place, that's going to cost approximately $52,000 a year to maintain, to have the maintenance contract for the RMS, JMS system, and so, we're asking for the $52,000, $52,166 to be added to our budget for the RMS, JMS software maintenance fees, and do you want me to continue on, or you'll ask questions depending on the package?
No, good explanation, I think if there's questions, they'll come at you, you can continue.
I'll just continue on, and if you have questions, just please let me know.
Let me ask a quick question on that, we've been working this RMS, JMS thing for some time, are we pretty close to having a program that works?
Yes, so we are working with Tyler Technologies directly now, some of the system is being built within CAD, and within RMS, because all of this is going to be combined together, which is something that, the big reason why we wanted this done this way, and so, we are, right now, we're on a timeline, about a year from now, to have it all up, running, everybody trained, so, but it takes a while, because all the other information that's within our system, our current system, has to be archived and switched over, and then there's other systems that have to combine with the RMS, CAD system, that has to be built, or firewalls built, to be able to allow that, that flow of information between the systems, so, it will take us approximately about a year is what they're expecting.
It's the full system, it's CAD, so we'll have computer aided dispatch, and then the jail management system.
Yeah, yes.
And the records management system altogether.
Yes, and so, what that does is, it literally allows us to go paperless within the county, we have 10 agencies within Sedgwick County that are willing to come on to that system as well, because what that means is, is that when CAD, or the dispatcher's dispatcher call, it's entered into CAD, it auto-populates in our computer systems, in our MDTs, the information that we need to fill out reports, and the clearer, and those type of systems, so once we're done with the case, if we're arresting somebody, it will auto-populate that information, we'll have some information to put in there, and then that's immediately sent over to the jail, it will arrive at the jail prior to us getting there, at that point, we just look at, you know, we have to take their property, search them again, and hand them over to the jail, it's a very streamlined process, and so, and the same information is being relayed back to CAD, if dispatchers need information from our systems as well.
What about the other cities in Sedgwick County that may be dispatched, and then arrest somebody to bring them over to the jail, are they using a system that is compatible?
Well, so we have 10 jurisdictions within Sedgwick County that are looking to switch over to this system, they'll, they'll operate the same way, the folks that do not have this system will have to put a kiosk out in the jail booking area, or the officer intake area, where they'll have to put the information in there, because we will no longer take paper, and we've made that very clear for the last year and a half, that this is the way we were going.
Okay, but this 52,000 that you're asking for, that doesn't make it so that we're having to pay for them to input data, because they chose not to go with our system?
No, this is simply the maintenance contract, so if there's new software that comes out, if there's a maintenance issue that takes place, we have a breakdown somewhere, then it's paid for by this maintenance contract.
Okay, and then the other end of it, after it gets into the DA and gets into the court system, is that part of this system, so that it all flows, or do we still have to, how do we transfer it into the DA and the courts?
Well, that's going to depend on what Odyssey looks like, because Odyssey is the court system, and so, there will be, we're working through that as well, because we are going to the Tyler system, and the same group is working on the Odyssey system, so they're already having those discussions with the IT folks from the courts, on what that would look like, and how there could be some transfer of information there, to auto-populate other areas within Odyssey, so it doesn't have to be re-entered, and it's Tyler, so there should be ways to make that happen, because it's the same company.
Very good, thanks, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions.
All right, you bet.
Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, just, on the same line of questioning, actually, I'll just be very clear, Wichita, are they one of the 10?
No, they're not, they chose, so as you know, we were in negotiations with them to try to get everybody, especially the two of us, and dispatch together on the same system, in those meetings, you know, they said that it was critical that they get theirs done right away, and they weren't willing to wait for us to choose, so they chose another vendor.
Okay, what about Derby?
Derby is looking at coming on, because they're already with Tyler.
All right, well, I think, curiously, of all the inmates that are processed into the jail, what percentage of those are from Wichita?
90%.
Okay, thanks.
And Sheriff, this is a, this is a one-time maintenance contract that's for 10 years? Or it's 52,000 a year?
52,000 a year for 10 years.
Okay, so this will be a operating budget.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Next, so, we had, as you know, we have a plane, and that plane is now aging out, that's another whole conversation with the type of plane that we're looking for, or the type of plane that we're able to get, if you don't know it, planes are a hot commodity right now, so as soon as we find one, they're sold already, so we've got Plan Two going into effect, I just had a meeting on that today, however, we had pilots that retired, and so we started the process of training two new pilots, one pilot has 700 hours, has to get to 1,000 for insurance purposes to be able to fly the plane herself, we have a reserve deputy, Dr. Lay, who's been the second pilot with us for several years, wasn't paying him, at this point, for the last year, we have been paying him to be the main pilot, because we didn't have other pilots, once the plane comes onboard, the insurance company said that they will no longer insure him because of his age, so he cannot be a pilot for us anymore, and in the meantime, we're trying to get our other pilots up to speed to actually be able to fly the plane themselves, and so we're having to contract about $800 a flight, the plane itself, we got, is down right now, and we are, it's being serviced out in Indiana, and so, we have a trip scheduled for Alabama, that's a three-day trip, that's going to take us three deputies, and those type of things, if we had our plane up, it would be about a four-hour excursion there and back, without them to stop anywhere on the safety issues, so, because of that, you know, we have two sheriff's office employees that are completing their training and certification to become a pilot, until they complete the training, a contract pilot is needed for FAA and insurance needs, so the funds requested for that next year, based upon the amount of flights that we've made, even in 2020 during COVID, and 2019 would be $88,100, now I will tell you, this is something that, it all depends when she can get her certification and hours, we're also being told that a plane that we're really looking at right now, so we're looking at a new insurance company as well, that we're going to be starting to talk about, because they're telling us that she will need 1,000 hours on that plane, although it's the same engines, and it's a turboprop of what we fly now, which makes no sense, and so, we're hoping that these funds that would be requested will only be for one year, until we can get our other pilots up to, up to speed, and then we no longer need a contract pilot.
So what are you doing, so what were you doing previously, just you had this, the one that's aged out?
Well, we have, we had a pilot that was a sheriff's deputy.
Right.
Fully trained, all those type of things, and then the, we had two, one left, took a job at Cessna, we then, Dr. Lay, who trains our folks in flying this plane, and flying other planes, was a reserve deputy, so he would fly with us as the co-pilot, but wouldn't charge anything, because he's, he's a reserve deputy, he now is charging, because he is the main pilot now, and he's training our other two pilots on this particular plane, and so, it's right around $800 a flight that he charges us, which is the going rate for any contract pilot that you try to go out there and hire.
Okay. You have a question?
Yep, so, when are we going to buy this other plane, because if they're going so fast, I don't want to train somebody on something that we may not end up buying.
So, what's happened is, is that just today, the proposal was to, there's a place up in Newton that brings in planes, they refurbish them, put in new avionics, put in all that type of stuff, and then they sell them, and so, we're, we've approved it today, Penny was with us during that meeting, we've talked to Joe Thomas several times about it, because we cannot get a plane that's put up on the market, and so, we're reaching out, and it's a Cessna turboprop, I can't remember the, I'm not big on planes, so I can't remember what year and what type exactly, but it fits the, what we put out to the RFP, and it fits the budget, it'd be 1.5 million, which is what's budgeted already to purchase this plane, and so, that gentleman up in Newton will go out, look for the, it's a Cessna 300 plane, and. and will bring it in, re-haul everything in it, put in new avionics, so it's like a brand-new plane, and then will sell it to us for 1.5 million.
Okay. Did you say that your, our other one is down right now?
Mm-hmm.
We're not putting all those new engines and everything on it?
No, it's down because it had tons of cracks in the tail and the tail could fall off. So it's all being replaced.
But we're able to, we're not putting a ton of money in it so that we can trade it off as quick as we can?
Yeah, and the other problem with it is it's going to have to be sold. We have, the place that's fixing it told us that it's worth $500,000. We could advertise it on their lot and they would sell it for us because the gentleman up in Newton does not take trade-ins.
All right. Very good. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Maybe Textron would help us since they took Kate from us as an employee.
Actually, Textron told us that they'd help us.
They did say they were going to help us. They feel guilty. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on that one?
Okay.
Uh, the third decision packet has to do with clerical staff and sheriff records. We can never keep anybody employed there. It is not like any other clerical staff positions within the county. They were, we are open 24 hours a day, 365 days a week, which means we have people working second, we have people working third, holidays, and when they start out, their days off are Tuesday, Wednesdays, Monday, Tuesdays, Wednesday, Thursdays. And so we lose those folks immediately, either to internal, within the sheriff's office or their openings, mainly we lose them to other internal openings throughout the county. The other thing that's different about these particular records clerks is their job description really doesn't match what they do. And so we went through and looked at other entities that have records clerks for police records, those type of things, and started looking at what those look like. And so we are asking for that we be funded another $43,521 to get them into the right classification as far as what their duties are. And that's for sheriff records only. There's no questions on that. I'll move to the next.
Okay, I don't see any.
Uh, package four is the Cortico Wellness Support Mobile App Device. We have discussed that before with the commissioners. We originally proposed trying to do this for both FIRE, EMS, District Attorney's Office, Regional Forensic Science Center, us, and dispatch. This was during the COVID timeframe last year and it was not funded. Therefore, we went out and got a grant through our health and wellness coordinator that paid the first year of the Cortico app. It also is paying for all of our peer support training. We trained about 30 people, including myself, here about a month ago. And now those folks are assisting our employees with any type of issues they might have, whether it's work-related, home-related, you know, marriage-related, anything like that. And they have been working a ton. And so this app can be loaded up on your phone and it has a variety of issue or a variety of applications per se within the app itself, where if you're having marriage issues, it will, you know, direct you to some really good information on how to work on your marriage issues, financial issues, stress issues, all of those type of things. It also has some very good videos attached to it from Dr. Gil Martin, who's kind of the well-known health and wellness person within the United States. It also has every one of our peer support specialists on there, what phone numbers they can be reached at, plus their background, plus their department photos. So that went live three weeks ago. In that three weeks, the Officer Wellness Toolkit, which basically you answer some questions and kind of tells you maybe where you're at stress-wise, where you're at with some of the other issues that you might have going on in your life, we've had 550 visits. For the fitness, nutrition, and injury prevention portion of the Cortico app, we've had 300 visits. For self-assessment visits, that's basically a survey where you take a survey of questions and it gives you a self-assessment of maybe where you're at. We've had 300 visits on that. Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, 300 visits on that. And then the Dr. Gil Martin videos, we've had 100 visits. Our peer support visits, which started about the end of February, we've already had 650 folks reach out to our peer support specialist. So we are really wanting to change the culture within law enforcement. If we don't have a healthy deputy out there working, we're going to have issues. We're going to have things that happen out in the public view because they're not healthy mentally. And we know that from different studies and then what we went through after Deputy Coonsy died, the amount of mental health issues we were having after that incident. And on top of that now, with everything that's going on in the jail, with the burnout, the long hours, the folks that are, literally, we're taking them to a hospital because they're in crisis while they're working inside the facility. And so in, in my day, Tom's day, Rusty's day, you know, you were told just to kind of suck it up. You were looked at as weak if you showed any emotion because something bothered you. You didn't talk about it to anybody because you were seen as weak and you possibly could get moved to different areas because folks didn't want to work with you. And you would only talk about it maybe to your beat buddy. Very rarely took it home and talked about it. Now you see the alcoholism rates, the divorce rates, and the suicide rates amongst law enforcement. And so this generation is a lot more adept at wanting to know the reason why. They're a lot more adept at speaking about their feelings and if you don't speak to them about their feelings, we're in trouble. And so this app is very critical for what we're trying to change the culture at the sheriff's office and it's already, the amount of uses I am, I'm very happy with. This app also is available to retirees and it's also available to spouses at no charge to the employee. The four entities that are currently using it is us at the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, forensic science center, and dispatch. And so for the price of $35,000 a year for four public safety entities to be able to use these resources and hopefully help with our retention, because that's a big issue for us right now, is getting the people, whether they want to talk to us or not, but getting information in their hands that can help them become healthier, healthier mentally and physically, to retain them is a big issue. And so we paid for the $35,000 for 2021 out of the grant, but that grant money will run out at the end of this year. And so we're asking for $35,000 to be added to our budget to continue to have the Cortico app for the four different entities.
Okay. I don't see questions. Thanks. I didn't know that was, it sounds like it's a useful tool.
It's very useful. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I am curious, if someone in your staff was to reach out and get some type of mental health therapy and someone was to make an entry into some medical records somewhere that they had a mental moment, they needed some, some help, it might, maybe they're a little bit depressed and need, need some medication for a short time? Is that something that's career-limiting in your, in your staff?
No, it's not. In fact, that's what's nice, so nice about this app. We never know who's getting into them to look at things. We don't, we refer a lot to impact or self-referrals to impact. When they go self-referral to impact, we don't know anything about it as far as what the issues are unless they're the threat to themselves or others. The only time that can, it can be a detriment to your career is if you have an involuntary commitment to the hospital. And an involuntary commitment to the hospital, which creates judges to commit you to the hospital or hospital, that is detrimental to your career.
I'll just say that I think one of the problems we have with mental health is when someone reaches out for help, the stigma follows them the rest of their lives and it sometimes is career-limiting. So I would much rather have people in the community that are getting the help they need and they're being treated for the, for mental, mental issues that are, might be happening, many times just temporary. But, you know, a pilot cannot reach out for help because it'll ruin his career. So you have, either have a pilot that's not, that's not being treated and they go through life problems just like anybody else, or you have a pilot that would be, you know, it's being treated and then loses his career in that, in the process. And so the stigma is certainly a big problem and so I appreciate the fact that you clarified that if they do reach out and get help, that they're, they're not going to be.
No.
Career.
In fact, we encourage them to.
Thank you.
Uh, the next.
I'll just say it. Commissioner Lopez.
I have one question. What would it take to, to expand this to say like our EMS department? Because I would imagine they probably have a lot of the same problems that maybe your department runs into by responding first to all kinds of things.
Yeah, I would have to look at what the price cost of that was. We worked with Rusty for EMS and FIRE. Now EMS and FIRE is a different, it, it, all of these entities is good to be lumped in with law enforcement. EMS and FIRE are their own entity because of what they deal with. So it's a, it's a different website, but it can all be lumped into one contract. I think for all the other entities, it was around 58,000 a year, right close to 58,000.
Is that including this one?
Yes. So it would be an additional 20-some thousand a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we're good. Uh, the next thing is we have background investigator deputy. We currently, for the last three years, have been using personnel, moving personnel from other areas to be able to get the backgrounds done quick enough. We have two full-time background investigators, just to give you kind of a screenshot of this last month. As you know, we're trying to hire a bunch of detention deputies. We had 105 folks apply for the detention deputy position. Of those 105, 80 of them tested, which is the exam through HR for basic reading and writing skills. Of the 80, 50 passed. Of those 50, we started the background, or of those 50, they took the agility test, the physical agility test, that reduced it to 44. 22 of those folks passed that and at the, at this time, they're already in the background arena. So we're already getting backgrounds done. Of the 22, 18 completed their background and in those backgrounds, we had five make it out of, out of it. And we have four that are being hired because their backgrounds were, they didn't pass their background, plain and simple. And so as you can see, we produce a lot of backgrounds because we're trying to get these turned over very quickly. So as soon as they come in and they, after they test, we did 80 backgrounds in a month. Now that is a lot of vetting that gets done in a very short amount of time, but we have to be very diligent about doing that because I'm not going to hire people just to put butts in seats. We already have a problem with people that are vetted properly, pass all of their stuff that commit criminal acts. If you watch the news today, we had another one do that. And so the fact of the matter is, we take this very seriously. But to get all those backgrounds and that's just in detention, we have another 50 or so that we're looking at on the commission side because we've got to have another class of commission. And so it's come to the point now where we are short personnel. We move personnel from different areas to get these backgrounds done quick enough so we can get them hired enough that at this point, it makes it, it, it just makes sense that we hire another position to do backgrounds. The increase of, we've had an increase of about 35% more backgrounds. When I talked to you here about a couple of weeks ago, it's the quality that we're struggling with now. That's why we wanted the raise, so that hopefully it would draw more quality people in to wanting to be in the detention facility. And so is there a cost savings? There's a cost savings on the fact that we're not permanently moving or temporarily moving people away from the facility to help do backgrounds or away from judicial or patrol to help do backgrounds, which means then we run short in those areas. To say that it's going to save money for overtime and those type of things, there is a certain amount of overtime that gets spent because of this extra person, because they got to go out to the people's homes at night, those type of things. A lot of times they flex their schedules, but sometimes they can't. So to say there's an actual cost savings there, I can't tell you that there's a cost savings. What I can tell you is, is that the, the two background investigators for the last three years has not been enough to be able to properly keep up with the backgrounds.
Sheriff, I just need, why, why would this not be part of, of an HR function? Is that?
What's that?
Is backgrounds? Is law enforcement a different background than regular HR?
Oh, it's much different.
You got to be certified or have access to?
No, it basically, we, we go through everything about this person's life, their Facebook accounts, their Twitter accounts, all their other stuff. And our testing is different than just the general testing that goes on at HR. We have found, and this is before you came here and before Sheena was here, HR was doing a lot of that stuff and it was taking us five, six months to get people through the system. And so we took on all of that ourselves so we could get people through the system much quicker.
All right. Thanks.
And home visit too.
And home visit is, is a major piece of that. We go out and interview any of their folks that, that recommended them. We go out and interview their prior employers. It's a very extensive background that we do.
Okay. Thanks. I don't see any other questions.
Uh, next is ammunition cost. We've held off on this for a couple of years. It's no longer we can hold off on it. Ammunition costs us through the roof. A box of 9mm ammunition, it's about a dollar around now. It used to not be that. So we're paying almost $50 a box and we're buying practice ammunition. We don't shoot our regular ammunition that we carry on duty because it's so expensive. So we carry or we shoot practice ammunition anytime we're qualifying or practicing. Same with our rifle rounds, same with our shotgun rounds. But ammunition has just skyrocketed and so we're asking a $33,000 increase to the budget from this point forward to afford the ammunition that we have to purchase. Uh, next, um, you know, and there's a couple of these here that are one-time asks. This would be one of them and this is probably the most expensive ask that we have. So, and if you don't know firearms that well, I'm not a huge firearm person, but like what I'm carrying is this your traditional sights. And we've done a ton of studies. We've looked at FBI studies. We've looked at several other studies when it comes to what's called a red dot sight. And so we have sent several people, including myself, have gone out and shot just the regular sight pattern and then a red dot sight pattern. Our hit ratio has gone way up and also our pattern is usually about like this and it is narrowed. The reason that I'm asking for these, and there's 188 positions that carry guns, is the fact that, you know, when you're put in a special, a stressful situation, you're on the move and those type of things, the amount of hits that you get on a target is really low for the amount of bullets that are fired. And my worry has been for years that one of those rounds hits an innocent person, plain and simple. And so we're asking for, the funding request is for 192,000 to place these red dot sights on our guns, which also creates another issue, which means we have to buy new holsters. So that's part of this cost. But the red dot sight, it, it is very accurate. It makes us more accurate. It makes us more accountable, I think, to, for the rounds that we're firing. And it's a safety issue for us and it's a safety issue for citizens. It's not like I like buying more equipment for our handguns, but it is something that if that can reduce our liability and it can reduce rounds that are off a target that could strike someone else, I think I have an obligation to bring it in front of you.
I don't see any questions.
Next is also a one-time cost. It's a security camera system up in the eighth floor judicial area. We have several cells up there, hallways up there where we keep inmates in between trial or we house them there until trial is ready. That security, excuse me, that security camera system is very old. It doesn't record and we've had a few incidents up there that we wish we would have had recording. And so there's also blind spots in the hallways and at the elevator in case one of our deputies gets into trouble. We're not able to see that. Um, we're not able to see that. The new system would increase the safety and security of that particular floor, uh, and allow for recording to be consistent with our other camera systems being used by the courthouse police. Um, the funds that we're requesting a one-time cost of $40,000 to replace the cameras on the eighth floor.
Would that be going through our TRB process and then we'll do, through the budget here, I mean, through the sheriff's budget? Our technology review board would take care of this? Most of our camera stuff is, I think it's gone through TRB.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it is at this point. Um, but it's also an Axon system, which is our system.
Well, and one of the things you'll hear on next Tuesday is discussion about, um.
So we can hear you, microphone.
Oh, sorry. I thought I was speaking loudly enough. Um, one of the things we'll talk about next Tuesday during our, uh, CIP review is some security system upgrades, including cameras for the sheriff's office. And so we'll look to see if this can be included as a part of that, or if not, we'll probably just do it through his budget listings as he says that Axon system is theirs.
All right, thank you.
Okay, don't see anything else.
Okay. Um, next, uh, we have a decision package for a warrant clerk. Back in 2018, uh, we had a system, uh, that would extract, um, there's a software extractor that would take the warrants from the clerk's office, uh, and then would enter them into our system, and then we'd have to check, recheck, uh, do a bunch of other work on them to make sure that the warrant is correct for the right person, but the software extractor broke. Since that point, we've been hand entering every warrant that we get, uh, and that's thousands a year. And so we used overtime and we also used part-time employee, uh, so taking out of our budget to pay for a part-time employee. We've been doing that now almost three years, uh, and there is really no end in sight. I, we've talked to IT, it's going to be a couple of years before they can, um, do something with a software extractor, because we're also looking at a new Odyssey system with the court system, or we're looking at a new RMS system. So there's really no reason to put a lot of time, effort and resources into building something right now for a system that we're getting ready to lose. So, uh, we're asking for the funds, uh, to pay for a warrant clerk who, their job all day long is to enter all the warrants, uh, and look up information to ensure, uh, that the person on the warrant is the same person that was charged, is the same person that we're putting into the computer. Uh, and that ask is for $59,343.
Good.
Next, uh, we have, uh, we purchased a drone about four years ago. We have a couple of smaller drones, uh, that are our training drones. The main platform that we use, uh, is aging out. It's starting to have, uh, issues. It's not staying, um, in flight as long, uh, those type of things. I will tell you that I was a little bit skeptical, uh, on the drone usage, uh, when we first looked at it. It took us about three years for me to get comfortable with actually purchasing a drone. Um, we purchased it, I'm pretty sure we purchased the drone through some grant funding and some asset forfeiture. The, I'm sold on it now, and the reason I'm sold on it is, uh, there's been several times that we've been called out, not just within the unincorporated areas of the county, but also other jurisdictions within the county, uh, to search for missing children, uh, to search for missing adults. Um, anytime we have a major crime scene out in the county, uh, it's taken up, uh, for photograph of the entire area, which is now kind of common, uh, for the district attorney's office to want, uh, instead of, uh, what we did before and fly an aircraft over and take photographs. Um, the biggest thing that we're using it for is the fatalities, and our fatalities are up in nineteen, in 1920, and so far this year, it's on pace to be up again. What's nice about the drone is, uh, what used to take us two to three hours to plot out an accident scene, especially a fatality or a serious injury, uh, it would take us almost two to three hours to make measurements, plot everything out. Um, this is equipped with software that when we take it up in the air, in a half hour, it's taken all those measurements, everything we need for, uh, either the court case to be prosecuted by the DA's office, uh, or to prove, okay, this is what we think happened with the accident, here's who's at fault, because the insurance companies are always calling us. It takes us about a half hour to do that. It's downloaded into a program and it spits right out. And so, um, you know, the delays in traffic delays and, uh, redirecting traffic, uh, time spent, uh, by the deputy or deputies who's working the case has been reduced. That is the function that, that has been most impressive to me. Uh, now, with that said, luckily, we haven't had any major, we've had missing children, we've had missing adults, but we have not had, uh, one that was missing for a long period of time. Uh, and, you know, we were out, uh, in the far northwest part of, of Cedric County, uh, where three kids were missing. And so we were, uh, able to get the drone up there immediately. It was very hilly, very wooded, um, just a nasty area. This also has infrared on it, so we can detect, uh, heat signatures, those type of things. Turned out, they were housed a mile and a half away, uh, but the drone did actually catch them in the yard. So that's how we were able to find them. Uh, so th- there is, uh, uses for this, uh, that I think are, are extremely important to the sheriff's office and also to the public we serve. And so that funding request is $34,366. Next. So, when I came from the police department, there was a pawn shop database there that had been used by the entire, um, all the agencies within Cedric County. Uh, the pawn shop database is something that is utilized quite often, uh, because a lot of times folks that have drug habits will go out and burglarize different areas, different things, and they'll take it to the pawn shop to, um, pawn it for money. Uh, the pawn shop has to register that, what came in. Uh, if the pawn shop database would match that, if we had serial numbers for what was stolen, we could then identify, yep, that's, uh, something that was stolen last week in a burglary. Go down there, confiscate it and return it to, uh, the rightful owner. Um, here, it's probably been about three years now, uh, the Wichita Police Department said, we're not using that pawn shop database anymore. We're going to Leeds Online. Uh, if you want it, this is how much it costs. Uh, and so, uh, there was really no discussion with us, uh, per se, other than they weren't going to do the pawn shop database anymore. And so I chose not to do it right away, uh, because first off, we weren't funded for it. Uh, second off, I didn't really like how it happened, uh, and, but it's gotten to the point where I've visited with our detectives, um, our property crimes are way up in the county. Um, and it, there's one big reason for it, it's narcotics and the methamphetamine that's taking place. And so, am I doing a disservice to the citizens of possibly being able to get their property back over $11,000? When it comes down to that, it gives us a better opportunity to retrieve their stolen item and to return it to the owner. And so, um, I'm requesting a, a funding request of $11,983. Uh, some of this stuff, I, I'll be honest with you, we used to be able to afford ourselves because of budget savings. Um, last year was, we had no budget savings. We're not predicted to really to have, uh, a whole lot of, I'm hoping that we can hire a lot of people, cause the budget savings we're having, uh, is because the lack of people inside the facility, but on the flip side of that, we're paying more in overtime. So there's not near as much budget savings, uh, as we used to have when we had more people employed, uh, and those type of things. And, uh, the, the asset forfeiture stuff is pretty much gone, to be honest with you. Uh, there's not hardly any, I think we had $11,000 seized in property and money last year, uh, through state forfeiture. So, uh, those things, uh, don't take place near as often. There's many, many reasons for that, uh, but it seems like a small request, but the fact of the matter is, it's going to be a yearly request and, or a yearly cost to us, so we're going to request that we get funded for it.
Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Sheriff. I, I, I remember the discussions we had a couple of years ago about this, uh, with the city of Wichita. City of Wichita won't share what they've got now with us, uh, so that, what it looks like to me, uh, they're using it to, our taxpayers are paying for it from them, and we're going to use it, and our taxpayers are going to pay for it for us. Uh, we can't share with them?
Set up for one account. If you want access to the information, then you gotta purchase your own account through Leeds Online Software. It's not a sharing system like it was before with the pawn shop database.
Very good. I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, uh, double charging our taxpayers.
Yeah, and, and so any entity within the county, so every police department in the county, if they want access to this, they have to buy an account.
Okay.
But the city ordinance for the pawn shops, i- it's a city ordinance that governs them, that they have to report the serial numbers of the stuff that they receive during the pawn. And so, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it in a while, but I'm not sure, there's very many pawn shops in the county. I think there's one, uh, but I'm not sure if there's a resolution that forces them to do that. I think there is, but I'm not positive.
So I guess we need our legal to look at that, see if we need a resolution to have the, any, if there are any in the county. Okay, we have our legal do that? Thank you.
And I, I might have the answer for you when I go back upstairs, cause I'm sure they know, but I, I just, I didn't grow up in this system, so I know the sys- city system really well and the ordinance when it comes to pawn shop. Okay. Uh, next, uh, this is not a cost to the, um, it, it's not something that, uh, will cost taxpayers or you any money to us. Uh, we have an offender registration unit. Uh, currently, they are working a ton of overtime. Uh, I've worked for a long time, along with other sheriffs, to get, uh, the KBI to adopt the new system, which is Offender Watch, which is information that's put in, uh, that's available to the public, that can look at all kinds of offender stuff. Most of the stuff that the people look at is the sex offenders. Uh, we plug in the information there. Uh, the KBI has refused to do anything with Offender Watch. Their, uh, system is extremely antiquated by their own admission, uh, but they refuse to, to do anything about it at this point. And so we have to enter all the information twice, cause it's by state law, it has to go into the KBI website. But that website is horrible, front-facing for the citizens. Uh, and so that's why we choose to go to Offender Watch. The other thing about Offender Watch is, if there's, and there's a lot of, um, sheriff's offices across the state and across the country that use Offender Watch. So if one of our folks, uh, who we are tasked with tracking, uh, or making sure they're compliant, gets arrested in Galveston, Texas, and they're on Offender Watch, it alerts us immediately. Uh, and then we can go and look and say, they didn't get permission to go to Galveston, they've just violated their probation, or they violated the Offender Registration Act, and we'll go down and pick them up. Uh, and so the KBI system does not do that. There's no alerts, uh, like that. So what's causing, uh, our two clerks out there besides their everyday duties is entering this stuff two times. And so, uh, fees collected, um, by the offender registration unit, we already have two deputies that their salaries are paid for out of, uh, the fees collected for the offender registration unit, so they're not, uh, paid per se out of taxpayer money. Um, that's what we're asking for this to be, uh, that it would be another unit clerk, uh, that would be paid out of registered offender fees, not out of tax base. Uh, next, we have inmate meals contract, uh, for some of you, uh, that were here before. That increase, uh, used to be just kind of, hey, here's your 9% increase for the year. And that's what it was, uh, with our other, uh, companies, and it was never really debated. Here about, uh, when we went to the new vendor, uh, for meals, um, it is negotiated every year. It's not just, uh, we'll give you 9%, cause the, it's between 5 and 12%, so you split the middle somewhere. Um, and so every year since then, it's only been a 3% increase. Um, I'm surprised, uh, that it's only a 3% increase because of the cost of food and commodities that have gone up. Uh, but, um, this year is a 3% increase, which is an additional $78,000 to be able to feed three meals a day to the inmates in our custody.
So is that in the budget request or is that a decision request? Is that in the budget that we're receiving?
It's a budget request, yes. Uh, the last one, uh, is inmate medical. Um, this one, uh, is a increase every year as well. Um, as you know, I came here, well, about this time last year, uh, where we were talking about, we had an RFP out, uh, for inmate medical. Um, it came back, there was two vendors that were interested, including our current vendor, uh, and the price tag that was attached to it. After discussions with the commission, uh, it was decided we would sign a two, one-year extension. And so we signed an extension for 2020. This is the cost of the extension, uh, for 2021. This is the cost for the extension for 2022. Instead of having the contract that was proposed, which, uh, would have been more money than this, uh, for the contract. And that was a decision that was, uh, made in conjunction with all of us, uh, at the time. And so, uh, we are going to request, um, we only really had two vendors that put in. Um, what we found out was, some other folks wanted to tour the facility before they even entered into any type of RFP process. We're going to open that back up here in June, allow other vendors to come in, tour the facility, what it looks like, those type of things. Uh, and then we'll go back out to RFP in 2022, while this, $383,000 covers this for next year.
Okay, don't see any questions?
And that's all I have.
Okay, um, anybody have any comments? Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify, so this 383 was just for the 5.8% increase, correct?
Yes, for the one-year extension on the contract, yes, sir.
Okay, my, yeah, it, it, I'm sure it's probably in the budget book, but I'd like to go back and look and see how this has changed over the last few years. I'm sure it's pretty, pretty alarming.
It goes up every year.
Every year, yeah.
About that price.
Do we not have some legislation that would have helped, um, use some Medicaid funds to help with this?
Well, we do, uh, and, and thank goodness we do. And so, um, this is the cost for providing healthcare inside the facility, our mental health pod, um, dentist, uh, or, yeah, the dentist stuff that goes on in there, and then any inmate, uh, that has to go to any type of specialized treatment, such as dialysis, or any inmate that's admitted to the hospital. Now, what the legislation covers is, is if they're admitted to the hospital, uh, we get the Medicaid rate, um, uh, for that, uh, particular issue. And so whether it's one day or it's, we've had people in there for 30 days, um, the Medicaid rate applies to the sheriff's offices. Because if we didn't have that Medicaid rate, the, the pricing would be just astronomical.
I noticed in your budget book, um, in the budget, um, budget that was submitted here, you have 69 parole, 69 parole officers.
69 what?
69 parole is what it says, parole, patrol, excuse me. Patrol officers. Does that mean that these are the, the, the sheriff's officer that are driving the cars around?
Yes, that are working the beats every day.
How are you doing on staffing in that, in that category?
Um, well, right now, we, we got an issue, um, a- as I discussed briefly at the, uh, when I asked for the raises for the detention deputies. Uh, we have, we've always competed, competed against the police department, which again, now is about $4 more an hour, starting pay. Uh, you know, when you guys, uh, assisted us with, with creating the steps and ranges, we were back even. Since then, they've negotiated their RFP and they're about, they're a little over $4 more an hour, starting pay. So we always compete with them. Um, but now we're competing, uh, with, uh, Bel Air and with Park City. Park City offered, uh, to pay for all their benefits, offered to, uh, give them a $10,000 signing bonus, start them at the same pay that they're starting at here, or that they get here, uh, those type of things. And we've lost three to Park City, and Bel Air has started their starting pay higher, and their ending pay higher, and we've lost two, uh, to Park City, or to Bel Air. We also have had, uh, four detectives put in for retirement in the last month. So we're going to have a very large class coming up here in, uh, July or August.
So not counting the four pending retirements, are we, are we down about how many right now?
Uh, you know, we just graduated a class and we have a class that's in session right now. Uh, so if you count them, um, we're just down the, the new folks that left. So the five, uh, deputies that left to go to other agencies, uh, and then the retirement, so it'll be nine. Um, but we don't know if we'll have other people leave between now and July or August.
Are you doing lateral transfers now?
We have not yet, no.
Is Wichita doing that?
They've tried. Um, we did not have anybody leave the sheriff's office to go to the police department. Uh, my understanding was. Uh, my understanding was that they, uh, put out a lateral, uh, class. They had about three or four people from other agencies that put in, um, and only, like, one of them made it through. Uh, I'm, I'm, um, I'm a little bit against the lateral transfer stuff, uh, and I'll tell you the reason why. We have what's called gypsy cops in this state, uh, which will bounce around to different agencies because usually they're in trouble with the other agency. Um, and instead of completing a full investigation, everything else, they leave, they go somewhere else, uh, those type of things. Generally, that's what I've seen with lateral transfers, uh, is, uh, some folks that maybe are unhappy or this, that and the other, but they're also have some issues. Uh, and I would rather take a, I'm not against taking some folks that have great careers and they just want to change. If we get those folks inquiring about wanting to come to the sheriff's office, that's not a problem. We do take people, uh, from other agencies, but they have to go through our academy and they have to start all over again.
I was going to ask, do they get some type of expedited?
No.
There's no expedite, okay.
No.
Okay. Um, uh, of course, I'm military, air force, there was, there was some consideration for, I don't know exactly how that worked, but there were some people that got through that much faster than others because of, of some type, some type of experience that was recognized. But, uh, a- anyway, um, one of my questions, and I, and I, I do want to recognize, Andre Sisko's in the back, back of the room here. Thank you, Andre, for being here. The reason that she is here, we've had, we've had conversations and I've asked you in the past and I was, I, I hate to put you on the spot today, but I do need to ask, you know, community policing obviously is very important. I know you're very committed to that, to the extent that you can do it. But, uh, according to the community in Oaklawn, they're, they're saying that the, the office that's there is basically never, basically lights are off or there's no one there most of the time. And they don't have, they don't sense there's a, a, a presence by the sheriff's office the way they used to have. I'd like to ask you to respond to that and let me know what I need to know.
Yeah, and I responded to her as well. Uh, the fact of the matter, COVID, uh, created a lot of issues for us. We had a lot of openings and we had to fill a lot of different positions. Uh, community policing isn't just for Oaklawn, it's for the entire Cedric County. And so they, uh, also do community policing in other parts of Cedric County, not just Oaklawn. Um, due to COVID, yeah, we had to put them back into patrol, along with our CL division, which takes care of all of our DARE, uh, stuff, education, uh, our community liaison people. Everybody had to go back to patrol because we had so many people that were sick, that were out, uh, those type of things. We have, uh, placed two more people back into their ma- their major duties are community policing. Are they filling in for beats when we only have four or five people working because of the sickness and those type of things? Uh, and we're supposed to have eight deputies out there? Yeah, they have to fill in. Uh, but they are still handling, at this point, uh, community policing, uh, requests and community policing type activities.
With respect to the whole county, and again, I appreciate that. I don't know what other hotspots in the county that may, may be out there, but obviously this is one, you know, Oaklawn does have.
It's why the office is down there.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Is it your, is it your intention when you get staff back up again that will hopefully restore, go back to where we were?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's really what I wanted, what I wanted to hear today is that there's a commitment to go back in that direction.
Oh, we've always been committed. I was hoping we'd be there by now, but, uh, you know, when you're running short, what's first and foremost with the sheriff's office is we have to answer calls for the entire county, not just for one area.
Right.
And so, uh, when you take a look at that, that means the entire county. And I'm responsible for the entire county, not one little, small section.
I just wanted to be able to answer the question because I get, I get a lot of phone calls, people being concerned about what they don't understand where we are in the process and they feel like they've, they've lost something that they used to.
No, it's very critical. Community policing is very critical. Community policing in that particular area is very critical because it is, uh, the area where we respond to most of our calls. Um, and so, but the fact of the matter is, is I also have two beat deputies that are assigned to Oaklawn, three shifts a day. Uh, and there's no reason why they can't be doing community policing activities and they should be because of, we've been telling them, uh, that community policing is a philosophy, but it should be throughout the entire department.
If there's anything I can do or anything that Oaklawn Improvement District can, can do to, I guess, sort of welcome that and engage them in the community in a maybe more visible way, I would, I would welcome that. I would love to engage that if I could possibly could, but I know you're doing everything you can to, to manage all your pressures. You have, obviously have a lot of pressures today, no question. Um, I just want to make that formal request and let you know that.
I appreciate it.
That, uh, the community is noticing and if there's anything we can do to make that more visible, I, again, I would love to, to know how I can help. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's bring this back to the budget. So Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Um, are you sure you don't have any more asks?
It's the most I've ever had and I don't, I don't like having to bring all those here, but.
Okay, so just, um, what is the average length of stay for an inmate in our jail?
About 37 days now.
Okay, so 37 days. What is the average cost of housing the inmate for a day?
Uh, it's right around $71 a day.
$71 a day, okay. All right, and then, um, I see that the mental health pod was developed in 2014.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So for seven, you know, eight, seven years roughly, um, we've had this mental health pod. Do we know, um, what the recidivism rate is for that pod? Like, what's the success rate of that pod?
Uh.
You don't have to answer that now, maybe that's.
Yeah, I would have to look that up.
Okay.
Um, for the mental health pod itself, um, I don't know that.
Okay. So I wonder if we can, I guess, my, the point of the question is that's like a certain specialized kind of program or.
Yes, it is.
Way in, in our jail. And so what type of, so if, if someone's there for 37 days, are they given any sort of, like, what are they doing for 37 days?
Well, um, that is a, prior to COVID, um, we had a lot of volunteers that came in, uh, put on different programs, mentoring program, AA, uh, a GED program, uh, those type of things. And so, uh, we have Christian Ministries Organization, uh, which is chapel, uh, and they meet with the inmates on an individual basis, um, all throughout the day, those type of things. Because of COVID, uh, the volunteers weren't coming in any longer, which I don't blame them. Um, uh, you know, and we also had an outbreak of, of COVID within, inside the facility. We're starting to see some of those come back. So the mentoring program is, is starting to ramp back up again. We have more ministers coming in. Um, I saw the other day that the person from USD 259, uh, was in the building, so that means they're ramping back up, uh, the high school diploma program. Um, but for the most part, uh, they're in their, they're in the day rooms.
Just kind of hanging out.
And they're hanging out.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any others right now, but I appreciate that, um, Mark and Judge, that you were here and that we can kind of, it helps us get a grasp that this is a kind of a holistic, uh, approach for us to help improve the whole community as much as your departments, although I know Judge, you'd probably, I didn't see that you asked for a drone in your courtroom. But, uh, no, uh, the, the, I think it was helpful for, for all of us to kind of help connect the dots and intertwine your departments and, and we'll take your, I'm sure we'll take your offers or your requests very, very seriously. So I don't know if there's other comments or, we got some, we got another one, another thing?
That's the end of our presentations. Um, Commissioner Howell, inmate medical's on page 526. Uh, we do have a couple minutes left. Are there any questions or anything else you want to discuss before we wrap up today?
Well, let's see, is there any, any questions? We covered a lot today. We kind of had a long county commission meeting too, so we kind of, we had a 55-minute break though, so.
I have one question.
Well, I'm, I'm surprised.
Well, sorry, this way it's going to be, my friend.
Okay.
Um, I do see on the, the calendar in the front of the budget book, it shows dates out through the 14th of May, but on the sheet that talks about the schedule, it ends on the 11th of May. So what's supposed to happen the 12th, 13th and 14th?
Those were just times that were held in case we needed more time, but we're only scheduled through Tuesday, the 11th for these hearings.
All right, thank you. Sorry for my question.
Okay. All right, Tom? Lindsey?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, uh, we start at whatever, what time tomorrow?
Nine o'clock tomorrow.
You know, on our commission schedule, uh, that was in our, on my schedule, it, it wasn't accurate, uh, who was talking and what times, so I don't know if that matters. I printed it off so I could try to follow when I was vaguely, so, minor, minor detail.
We could check on that.
We start at what time again? Nine o'clock?